We want to bring the regular Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission meeting to order on July 14, 2022. If we would all stand and pay our respects to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. Susan, we have a new member this evening. I don't know if you have him in your roll call.
I do.
Okay, we have a new PC member, Justin Ballard, and so if you would note the role this evening.
Well, as noted, Mr. Spiz and Mr. Hunwick are excused, and there is a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda Thursday evening tonight, July 14, 2022, at 7:00.
I have a motion by Mr. Noel. Do I have a second?
A second.
We got two at the same time. I'm going to take Mr. Turner on the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, we'll move on to five. We have approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission regular meeting of May 26, 2022. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes dated May 26, 2022, for the Planning Commission regular meeting.
Do I have a second on that motion? Ready for Mr. Ballard?
No.
Okay. You weren't there.
I wasn't here for that one.
Is that you, Corey?
I'll second, yeah.
Mr. Bailey, okay, we have a motion for Mr. Noel, supported by Mr. Bailey. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any ayes, nays? None? Okay, we're moving on. We have room for any kind of comments from the public at this point in time that would not be something that would be this evening's meeting. So if there's anybody here in the public or at this meeting that wants to make any public comments, now's the time to do it.
My name is Rick Rice. I'm a local businessperson in the area since the 80s. My family's been doing business in the area since the 60s. I have a statement I would like to read from our attorney regarding petition for the special use.
Well, wait a minute, sir. Wait a minute, sir. What I want from people right now to make comment to are things that are not on tonight's agenda.
This is not regarding the agenda. This is another issue.
Oh, it's another?
I was in front of the board last night.
Oh, excuse me. I misinterpreted.
That's fine. I was in front of the board last night, and I read a letter to them from our attorneys. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight. They're in Grand Rapids, and due to time constraints, they couldn't get here.
Okay.
But I'm going to read the letter that I was sent.
Okay.
So I'm a member of the Applicant Production Drive Holdings LLC who recently applied for medical marijuana provisioning center license. I'm speaking today to object that my application was not on the agenda today as well as the ones that aren't before you today. The zoning ordinance amendment adopted allowed for a special use land permit for marijuana facility as well as the medical marijuana licensing ordinance and application. Did not provide any notice that the applicants received after the very first day that the application window opened would be treated as a second round applicant. In addition, the amendment to the zoning ordinance that allows for special land use permit for marijuana facilities was not effective until June 22, 2022, which was eight days after it was published on June 15, 2022. However, each of the applicants before you tonight submitted their application before June 22, 2022, when the amendment was actually in place. We timely submitted our application, and our team has extensive experience in safety and compliance in the cannabis industry. We would merely ask to be treated equally with the other applicants and to be given the opportunity to be considered as well. I'm asking on behalf of my team and the Production Drive Holdings application be considered and treated equally as the application before you today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chair, can we get a copy of that letter to put in our file, please?
Do you want a copy of that letter? As a group right now from the PC?
No, just for Susan to put in the minutes.
You cannot attach anything to the minutes unless you make a motion as a board to attach it.
We're not going to...
We're fine.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other people here from the public that wish to speak on matters not related to something tonight's meeting? All right, I'm seeing none, so I'm going to go on to commissioners' comments. Do we have any from the... The only thing I would like to comment first on is I'd like to thank Justin Ballard for his application to come on this PC committee because it's tough to find people sometimes to work with on a volunteered basis almost within the community. So thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on from commissioners. Now, tonight we have three public hearings, so I'd like to stress for just a minute. I'm going to have Zach come up and just in a brief moment make some comments in how we will handle these public hearings and receive public comments regarding these. They're very similar in nature, but we have three individual people here for public hearings, so we have to open and close each one individually.
So we've got a lot of new faces here. Land use planning control law can be sometimes complex, so I want to try to put the framework in. So all of the proposed provisioning centers are what's called a special land use. Special land use is something that's permitted, but because of the nature of the use, and there are lots of these in zoning across the state and the country, special land uses, that they may cause greater impacts on the surrounding community. So the local unit of government is required to hold a public hearing to get feedback so that they can make sure that it's done in a manner that won't cause negative impact. Because of the number here and the fact that there are three of them, and also the fact that each of them requires site plan approval, my understanding is the Planning Commission intends to hold the public hearing for the special land use and then wait to take action on the special land use until later when it also looks at the site plan. Because oftentimes, the special land use gets entangled with details on the site plan, so it's kind of better to do them at the same time. I will add that this is even more complex than special land use and site plan because the township requires a license, which is reviewed and approved by the township board. In this case, all of the applicants have received those licenses from the township board last night. And I guess that's my quick version. So we're here tonight looking at the special land use, at the preliminary site plan, and later on, there would be a final site plan to flesh out details with the actual developments of the property.
Preliminary site plan.
Tonight is preliminary. Later will be final.
Want to make sure that's all turned. All right. Thank you, Zach. Okay, next on the agenda is a petition for PC 22006, applicant Lifted Industrial Partners II LLC. Do we have the petitioner here this evening?
Yes.
Would you please come up and put your presentation to us?
My name is Jeff Schmitz with JS Capital Group. I'm the developer and owner. TDG Chris will present for us tonight.
I'm plugged in up here.
Are you plugged in?
Yes. All right, so I'm just going to run through the site and then the plans, so everyone's familiar with it. So the site is located north of Drainer at 653 Lapeer Road. This is some photos of the existing building. You can see there's an entrance on the side of the building, and then the existing building has the main entrance on the front. There's parking in the front. And then on the north side of the building, there's a drive and some egress exits. So the existing building, some of the non-conforming parts of the site plan is there's parking in front of the building. The parking on the south side of the building is kind of awkward, and the building itself is within the setbacks that are non-conforming. So the proposed site plan is increasing the parking around the building, reducing the footprint of the building within those non-conform setbacks, the existing footprint of the building. So we're demolishing portions of the building and increasing the parking and increasing the green space on the Lapeer side of the building. This is a site plan representing the new landscaping. It'll be utilizing the existing trees for the green belt on the east side, and then some new green space along the Lapeer Road. This is a demolition plan, just showing that the entire inside of the building will be demolished, and then those two kind of additions will be demolished. And this is a very preliminary floor plan, showing what the provisioning center would look like, with the entrance being on the southwest corner, and then as you get further back, more less public spaces. And these elevations are just showing the materials, so wood, some metal, some stone, and the height of the building at 27 feet high. And then finally, some rendering showing the building. So the entrance, like I said, will be on the southwest side with the glazing there. And then you can see along the Lapeer roadside, that glazing is tinted out as required by the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. We need to open this public hearing at this point in time, so I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for Lifted Industrial Partners II LLC at 7:11 on July 14, 2022.
I have a motion from Mr. Noel. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
I have support and seconded by Mr. Turner. Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, we are open to the public...
You vote on the motion.
Oh, we got to vote on the motion. You want to call these by name, or you want to just do a yea and nay?
It's up to you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, the motion is now open for public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening that wants to speak in regards to the first petition, PC 22006, for the applicant named Lifted Industrial Partners II?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Should I approach?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is General Collage. I own the auto wash next to where they're...
Okay.
My main concern is on that north side of the building. Is that going to be the exit, or is that just going to be deliveries like it was for the Mazda auto parts?
I would... I want to be careful. It's a question you might have to wait because during public comment, we are not allowed... We don't get into conversation back and forth with questioning and answering. We're just here to receive public comments at the time. You have a good comment.
Yeah, because if it's a main exit, that could be a problem.
And I'm definitely listening to you, and I looked at this site plan myself, so I was kind of curious about what you just made comment to.
Yeah.
But we need to have you bring that up at a little bit different time this evening when we get into the preliminary site plan, where you're allowed to come up and talk at that time, and we can answer.
Okay, yeah.
But right now, we're just here for public comment.
Yeah, I just...
Okay, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here to make public comment for the applicant Limited Industrial Partners II? Okay, we've had public testimony. We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:14 for Lifted Industrial Partners Number 2 LLC.
Do I have support for that? To close this public hearing?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Noel and seconded by Mr. Ballard to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, the meeting... The public hearing is now closed. Now, technically, Zach, I want to ask a quick question. This is when we would normally take comments from the township's consultants and staff. Are we going to wait and do this after we do all these public hearings, or are we going to do these in rotation right now in order?
Well, that's up to your discretion. We have the ability to...
Ask the members of the board if they want to take all the public hearing comments first, and then do all preliminary site?
If you please, if you're interested, I can address just the provisioning center special land use stuff at this time. Most of the other comments from the consultants, I suspect, are more related to site plan issues.
Well, I guess because we have three of these in order tonight. This is very unusual for us, by the way. We don't normally have three of the same type of special land use applicants here at the same time. What would be the opinion of the members, I guess as the PCs, how they want to handle it? We probably should do, I believe, just to stay on track, Zach, and so we don't make any... We don't put anything out of order. We should probably have the comments from the township's consultants and staff now, and then we'll take the next one as it comes to us.
I would suggest you also have your discussion.
And have our discussion after the correspondence that we receive? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right. So my comments at this time will just be addressed to the special land use. Marijuana provisioning centers are a special land use in the Marijuana Provisioning Overlay District. This property is within the Marijuana Provisioning Overlay District. The specific standards for marijuana uses are outlined in Section 5.35 of the zoning ordinance. The quick version is...
I'm frozen.
Oops. This is not a prohibited use. As I mentioned, it's permitted as a special land use for medical marijuana provisioning Let's see. For provisioning centers, they need to be on property adjacent to and with immediate access to M24. This center is adjacent to M24. It has direct access with the two existing driveways. Spacing, there needs to be a minimum distance of 1,250 feet between provisioning centers within the township zoning jurisdiction. There are no other provisioning centers in this overlay district or in the township at the time. It meets that, and the provisioning districts were spaced to make sure that they would have that distance. You require medical provisioning centers to occupy a free-stranding structure, so no strip malls. It has to be an independent building just for this use. The proposed provisioning center would be in a standalone building as required, and there can be no more than one provisioning center per overlay district. There's none established in this overlay at the time, so this would be the first. For site design, products offered for sale can't be visible from outside, so you can have windows for light to come in, but you can't see the product. As I mentioned, there are windows. They're going to be tinted to prevent that. Drive-throughs are not allowed. The proposed provisioning center does not include a drive-through. Rooftop screening is required for mechanical equipment. It needs to be consistent with the building. As you saw from the facade drawings, from those elevations, it's consistent with the rest of the building. The other highlights, all of these facilities need to be inspected before they can begin operation. That's in your zoning ordinance, and it's in the state acts, the various state acts. There are a couple of provisions that kind of apply to the use. You need to follow all the state laws. You can't smoke marijuana products on the property. You can... Your sale of retail is limited to accessory for the medical marijuana. Going through here. Outdoor storage is prohibited. There is no outdoor storage proposed. They're not growing any plants. A security system is required, and for this and the other applicants, I, as your zoning administrator, have not received a copy of that. My understanding is that the plans are prepared, that they were shared with the sheriff as part of the licensing. So one of the conditions I noted in there is that the security plan be provided. That's something that they can provide between now and final site plan. And the state has very specific requirements about cameras and that it's recordable and that they can have access to it. It's kind of like Ocean's 11, where there's no gaps in the cameras type of thing. Can't sell tobacco products. Exterior signage is limited to a freestanding sign or a wall sign, and from their elevations, you saw that they're only proposing a wall sign. And that's the basics that I have for the special land use side of this.
Thank you, Zach. Mr. Sheriff, would you like to get up and make comments now at this point in time?
Again, most of our stuff released to the site plan.
So wait until site plan?
That's up to you. I mean, I can go over, but with regards to the special land use, that's a zoning issue.
I think I would rather wait for you to wait until we do the site plan on your... I'm sorry, I'm just apologizing for something playing with me here. I'm having a little struggle trying to get to some stuff a little quicker. I can't do it. So technically, Zach, on your behalf, I would wait for Mr. Schultz on behalf of the site plan, too. And then I think with the comments from the attorney's letters, I would wait for that for the site plan. So at this point in time, I would then look for any comments from the commissioners regarding our... Well, actually, to review any of the correspondence we have, I would look for comments from any commissioners at this time, if they have any, in regards to what was just said. I was trying to pull it up, sorry. I'm still trying to pull it up. Seeing none, we have no...
I have a question here.
Oh, you do have a question? I'm sorry, Corey.
Some of the provisions that you said, where they could only be so far apart or so close, if this one is approved, does it negate the other two?
No.
Or put restrictions on the other two?
No, it was... It's... I would liken it to a belt and suspenders and drawstring approach that you've got written to your zoning ordinance. So the way that you've tried to limit it in the township here is you've created overlay districts to try to focus areas consistent with the intent and purpose of doing this. The next thing is you've said you get one provisioning center per overlay, and the next is the spacing. Now, when we created the overlay districts, we spaced them a quarter of a mile apart so there wouldn't be overlap. So it's belt, suspenders, drawstring. So it wouldn't prevent any of the others.
Are there any other commissioner comments at this time? I would then be looking for a motion.
No.
No, not next? What am I looking for?
If you're done with this one, you can go on to the next.
I can go on to the next public hearing?
Because the motion for the special land use will be handled at the same time as the preliminary.
Okay, thank you so much. I know why you're here, to keep me in order. I love it. Okay, then we have our next petitioner at this time for public hearing is be on our agenda, which is PC 22007, an applicant... I have to apologize, I'm not sure I'll say the person's name for the LLC. K-U-R-A-T-I-V. Who is that?
Curative.
Curative.
Curative LLC.
Curative LLC, thank you, sir.
Just a key way of spelling the word, curative.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for the public hearing.
All right. We have a motion by... Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Noel.
7:24.
Do we have support for the opening of the public hearing?
I'll support.
The support by Mr. Turner, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Thank you. Now, technically, I thought we were supposed to have the presentation by the petitioner first.
We have the presentation, then the public...
And then the public hearing. So you're throwing me off, too, now, John.
Yeah.
I'm having enough trouble. I'm having enough trouble trying to keep up with three at the same time.
I apologize.
Why don't you present yourself to us tonight? Thank you.
My name is Mark James. I'm an attorney. I represent Curative LLC, one of the petitioners here this evening. You know, I was talking to Jim before this hearing. Back in the day, I would prepare a PowerPoint presentation, and I would go over every single question in the zoning ordinance and have the question and the answer. I'd read that PowerPoint, and we'd be sitting here for an hour as I did that. I didn't do that tonight.
That's nice.
You can take me later. I do want to address a question, though. In one of the reports, the question or the purpose of the special land uses, it's the purpose of special land use review is to determine if the proposed use is compatible with surrounding area. That's pretty simple. If we look at where this location is, which is 1225 South Lapeer Road in Oxford Township, if we look at the surrounding uses and we look at what's there right now, it's a virtually vacant plot. It's got a couple structures that are left over from when it was a gas station, but it's... And Joe, I apologize, it's a bit derelict. It's in need of some rehabilitation and some development. The development we propose to put on this piece of property is going to be harmonious with the surrounding uses. It's going to be a beautiful building, which you will see during the preliminary site plan review portion of this hearing or this meeting. It's going to enhance the property surrounding the location. It is going to be compatible with the surrounding area, and I think we need to keep that in mind as we consider whether or not to approve this special land use. I know you've reviewed our application. You've reviewed my letter that was attached to the application.
I have. It was very lengthy for what we had... We have multiple pages for this meeting this evening.
Yeah, and I'm not going to go through and read that.
That is your application form up there right now. I'm trying to pull things up as you're talking.
Absolutely. Instead of rehashing what's in the application, instead of stepping on the toes of Jim Butler, who's going to go over the preliminary site plan, I'll answer any questions you might have of me right now, and if not, I'm going to excuse myself.
I think what we're going to do is we want to get through this public hearing...
Absolutely.
...format first, and then we're going to go into communications.
Of course. Okay, then I'm going to excuse myself. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, we technically kind of misrepresented ourselves, and we called the public hearing part earlier open. So we need...
I didn't have a second on the motion, but I can resubmit?
No.
It was seconded.
It was seconded, and we opened it.
The public hearing is open.
So we have the public hearing open. So now, if there's anybody from the public in regards to this petitioner's request that would like to speak, now would be the time to come up and speak in regards to that. Mr. Rice?
Good evening again. I'm the adjacent property owner to this site, and my concerns are I have potable wells that are... One is 22 feet from his property line. The other one is 80 feet from the property line. As noted, there was contamination at that site for many years. We're not sure where it migrated to or if it's been totally cleaned out. I would absolutely request that we find that out. If it does impact my wells, it's going to be a very big problem for us. It also adjoins another property next door to them that also has wells, so wells are a problem. That's my comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience at this time that would like to speak in regards to this?
Yeah, my name is Don Ostrand, and we live right on Helen Street, and we look out into that vacant property. And there was some mention of 1,000 feet from houses.
I want to back up for one second, Mr. Ostrand. You said you lived on Helen. We're talking about a piece of property at the moment that is south of Drainer Road on the east side. So we're talking about a property that's labeled as 1225 South Lapeer Road.
Oh.
You're living north of the fire hall, right up on Helen, so we would wait one minute before we would listen to your comments because we'll be doing that one next.
Oh.
So if you would just give us a moment, we'll be to you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public at this time that would like to speak in regards to this petitioner's request? All right. Now, we've had the public testimony. Now we need a motion to close the public hearing for petition PC 22007.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing for partial ID 0435127022. It's 7:29. That's 1225.
I have a motion by Mr. Noel. Do I have support?
I'll second.
I have a second from Mr. Bailey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Seeing none? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Now, Zach... Now, Zach, I would listen to you again in regards to this person's request. Where are you at on the page here? I'm going to find you somewhere.
It'll be pretty quick. I'll be done before you find it.
Okay.
So all the same criteria. This property is located in, within a marijuana provisioning overlay district. There are no other provisioning operations proposed that currently exist or proposed immediately next to it at this time. It is 1,250 feet away from any adjacent provisioning centers. It has direct access and is adjacent to M24. There are windows proposed, but as you'll see in the site plan, they're designed to limit views into it. No outdoor storage proposed. There is facade that goes up to cover any utilities on the ceiling. And, let's see, did I get them all? It does have a sign. This one is proposed to be on the facade of the building, so it's consistent with that requirement. And the same thing that we've noted before is that I have not received security plan as part of it, so that's recommended as a condition of potential approval for the special land use, that that be provided before final site plan review. And again, my understanding is that security plans were sent to the sheriff as part of the license process.
Well, I did note that, you know, especially in how you always say on your little complied side where everything is yes, 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 and down through there, and then plus your comments. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I want to get back on track here. We have the comments from our consultant, Mr. Michelle. Now, do we have any review of the correspondence or any commissioner's discussion at this time? Mr. Turner, Mr. Bailey?
No, sir.
Mr. Noel, okay, seeing none, and I need a motion to close this public hearing. No, excuse me. I don't need a motion. It's closed. We're done. We are moving on to petition C. of tonight's agenda, which is PC 22008, which the applicant has called Frequency Wellness LLC. Pip, oh, you're, you're here again.
Hello again. The long-winded one, right?
I didn't think that. You said that earlier.
I feel like I'm in court.
What's that?
I feel like I'm in court.
Shall I introduce myself again?
Yes, please, for the record.
For the record, my name is Mark James. I'm an attorney representing Frequency Wellness. And this is in respect to its application for a special land use for property located 280 North Washington Street in Oxford Township. I guess I could repeat what I said earlier with respect to curative. I want you to keep in mind that the purpose of special land use review is to determine if the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. We would, we would propose that the answer is yes in this case as well. This is the site of the old McDonald's. It's been empty for quite some time. It's, there's some concrete left on the, on the, on the ground there, but there's, there's no structures. There's no remnants of structures. We propose to build a beautiful building. It's going to be harmonious with the, with the entire surroundings, both the village and the township of Oxford. We think it's really going to complement the area. You've seen renderings in our application. You'll see them again during the site plan review portion of this meeting. And again, if you have any questions, we'll discuss those later during the site plan, but I have nothing further to add at this point.
Okay, we've had the presentation by the petitioner. Now we need to open this public hearing for PC 22008.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion-
All right, John.
...to open a public hearing for petition PC 22008, 280 North Washington Street at 7:34.
Do I have support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, Mr. Noel has made a motion to open the public hearing for PC 22008, and we have support by Mr. Turner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, the, the, we're open for comments from the public. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regards to this specific? Okay, we have a couple. Okay, we'll get you in a minute.
So anyway, I'm just kind of concerned when, I don't think there's a thousand feet distance anywhere in that parking lot from the houses on the three streets that are there. I'm wondering how this is going to impact the value of our homes. I think it's-
I can't answer that right now, but I wish I would. I'm listening to what you're saying.
It seems to me there's a lot of areas that are open that are going to attract lots of people that don't live in the area, and I'm just concerned for the safety of the kids and, and our property value.
All right, thank you, sir, for your comments.
And any improvement to that parking lot would be a plus, but-
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Wander. I'm also an attorney in the state of Michigan, and I also own the salon that's directly adjacent and south of this property. And I've been a resident of Oxford Township for over 25 years. I've also owned the property at 112 North Washington Street, otherwise known as Oxford Tan and Spa, for over 10 years. And my concerns are as follows. First of all, I never received any notice, and I know under the ordinance or zoning that technically you don't have to give notice, other than what you did in a newspaper, I believe, under the Oxford Leader, which most people, as we know nowadays, do not read newspapers. They look at their phones for informations and things. I had no notification, and I'm directly next to this property. The marijuana, excuse me, the marijuana provisioning center, special land use overlay, when this was heard, directly affects my property because that included part of my parcel. I own two. The driveway and the back lot, as well as my salon. I am concerned with regard to the homes directly behind this and how it's going to affect them. I'm very concerned with regard to how it's going to affect my property because eventually I would like to sell my property. I am getting to retirement age, and, for example, if somebody wanted to come in and put a daycare there, they're not going to put it next to a provisional center, educational facilities. I could go on and on about the types of businesses that wouldn't even look at my property with a medical marijuana provisioning center next to it. So I respectfully disagree that this is not compatible with the surrounding area that Mr. James presented. There's, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Ann Keynes. I'm a resident of the Stony Lake Village condos, which is part of the Waterstone community here in Oxford Township. And I'm here this evening to speak in regards to this particular parcel. I don't have anything negative about the company, that the applicant for this particular medical marijuana provisioning center, but I am concerned in regards to the parcel and its location. And I have four points that I want to bring up, and I'll go more in detail. But in summary, the first point is the unfitness of this location for this type of business. The second is the impact on the traffic flow. Third is, why was this parcel selected and up for this type of business? And four, what is the current status of the marijuana business in Oxford Township and the village? So going back to why I feel that this particular location is unfit for this type of business. Number one, you've heard from prior speakers, the residential factor. There are homes on Harriet Street and on Helen Street. There is a Goddard School across the street. There is a medical facility, McLaren Urgent Care Center, across the street. And if it's, it's my understanding that our supervisor, Jack Curtis, is still pursuing the Beaumont Hospital facility, just which would be hundreds of feet away. None of these would wish to have a medical marijuana facility in walking distance or neighboring to this, to their facilities. Secondly, looking at the traffic flow. This is one, in my opinion, one of the most dangerous strips of M24 in Oxford Township. This medical facility would be, excuse me, medical marijuana provisioning center would be around a blind curve. You come around that fire station, those lanes have been narrowed. You're coming around, not seeing what type of, of traffic is ahead of you. We recently just had that left turn lane added by MDOT in that area because of the, the bank and the McLaren Urgent Care Center, but it still has not really solved the issue of narrow lanes, left turn capability, and around a blind curve. And you have traffic flow that's going to be impeded. Somebody may come around that curve and say, oh, this is the facility I'm looking for. And if they apply their brakes, I mean, all of you have driven that particular strip of land. You know that if you, if somebody applies their brakes, you're in big trouble, especially during the winter months and the icy roads. And then, when I looked at the site plan, and I was trying to see what kind of ingress or egress or aprons, if you will, off M24 there would be for traffic slowing down to go into this facility, there were none. And then, if you look at the facility, and let's say you, you have to exit the facility the way it was designed, the site plan, and you, you'll have to go north in order to go, continue on north on La Pier Road. But even if you want to go south, you would have to go north to a turnaround and then to progress south to go back toward Oxford, the village downtown area. And as you know, the first turnaround you get to is that unsavory turnaround right by Leo's Corny Island, and I know you guys have all been there. I've been there. I've had a lot in your misses. If you're in that, that little turnaround that can really only hold one vehicle, and someone behind you doesn't move or comes up behind you, and now they're trying to fit in two vehicles in that particular turnaround, it's very, very dangerous, especially again during the winter months when you have snow piled up there and visibility becomes an issue. So that's the next available turnaround that traffic would go through in order to travel south from exiting from this particular facility. So to me, I really look at that between the flow of traffic, the visibility, the limited left turn lane, that those are all things that would really cause concern in an already difficult area to travel through on La Pier Road. Parcel selection, point number three. This was deemed a, quote, "hard-to-develop" parcel, and that's how it became on the list of possible places for a medical marijuana facility. And I've inquired to the township, who was on the committee that deemed this, quote, "hard-to-develop"? No one can tell me. I said, what's the criteria that was listed to deem it hard-to-develop? Nobody can tell me. So who deemed it hard-to-develop, which put it on the, the page for a medical marijuana provisioning center location in the first place? It's zoned C2 general, commercial currently, not industrial. When people voted for marijuana to come into the township, it was all understood that these would take place and be postured on industrial-zoned parcels. So now I'm confused about that as well. And now it's special land use. And special land use is, it's supposed to be in harmony with the surrounding area. Now, the two other applicants that we've heard of, they're, heard before us, their, their particular locations are in a more commercially zoned area. This one is not. This is right across the street from a school, right across the street from the medical facility. You have your huge, large community, Waterstone Community of condos, homes, assisted living center. You have residents on Harriet Street and on Helen Street. So this is a very different, I feel, configuration than the other two applicants have, have brought before you earlier. And I never knew, I always thought when things were going to be rezoned, you go to, before the zoning board of appeals. So how the township gets it from a C2 and now to special land use, I'm just kind of wondering if the legal process is being followed properly and how this is all happening. Because, you know, I watch the meetings. I try to do my best to attend the meetings watching them on OCTV, but I haven't seen where this has ever come up for this particular parcel. And I have a question, too, about the transfer of this parcel ownership. It was privately donated to the fire station back in 2011. So the township then sold it to a land contract, and then they said they're no longer responsible for what happens to that particular parcel, what the usage would be. But I find that rather difficult when there were so many other things that the township could have used that parcel for, rather than sell it for a medical marijuana provisioning center. I think residents of Oxford Township could have benefited for a, from a farmer's market that they're always looking for, or a dog park, or something that more residents could use, rather than sell it for this particular purpose. And I don't think many residents knew this even happened, because I've never seen the township move so quickly on an issue such as this. And then finally, my fourth comment is the current state of the marijuana situation here in Oxford Village and Township. Most people don't know, but the village of Oxford has already issued nine marijuana licenses, both recreational and medical combination, but there's nine. And now there's three tonight before you for Oxford Township. So that's 12 marijuana licenses for an area of the Oxford Village and Oxford Township with a population of little only over 22,000 people. I mean, are we all going to be smoking marijuana? I mean, it just makes no sense, and this is, seems extremely excessive to me. And just a closing thought, on this particular applicant here for this parcel, it's a medical marijuana provisioning center. There's deemed 61 parking spaces, but only three are designated handicapped. That just doesn't make sense to me for a medical facility, that only three spaces would be handicapped designated. So with that, I apologize if I went over my three minutes, but I think I speak for some of the other folks here this evening, and I don't know if there are others after me, but thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kitty Puleze. I am a resident in Oxford Township.
Could you please state your address?
Yes, 1032 Cedar Street. My concerns with the location of this medical marijuana establishment are, they've already really been touched on largely by the previous speakers. But one that I noticed, which is kind of strange, is that the, the 24 corridor was intended to reduce the, and reduce and the risk of criminal activity, particularly theft. But in my opinion, placing provisioning centers in a high-visibility area along M24 increases the risk of crime happening because it facilitates a robbery and easy access to 24, and out you go. So then you're in a high-speed pursuit of a criminal. I don't know, that just doesn't make sense to me. It sounds a little dangerous. And also, it, I read something that the petitioner's names should also prove that they are owners of the sites that they are intending to use. But I'm, I'm seeing that the site for this petitioner, 96, a portion of 96 North Washington is under the Oxford Township Fire Department. So shouldn't their name be on the application? I don't see a sale that indicates it's been sold. So, but it's on here. The address is on here, but their name's not on here as part of the applicant for this process. Also, I'm just going to reiterate that they are very close. They're probably 500 feet or less to a residential area right behind them. And I know that, you know, a lot of those residents are probably here by what I can see. And, you know, they would have concerns. I would have concerns. Because, I mean, places like that do get robbed. I just don't think that this is conducive to creating an environment in that particular area that has a high value for bringing in good business, business that we need, retailers that we need. We have no retailers out in this area. We have no retailers out in this area. We have to drive 20, 30 minutes to buy a pair of jeans, other than Meyer. There's nothing out here. If we're not knocking on the right doors and talking, having the right conversations to get these companies to come out here, then put somebody else in place to have those conversations. We need things to happen. We don't need medical marijuana provisioning centers. That's it. Appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
My name's, uh, Dr. Philip Ross, I'm in 922 Chelsea Boulevard in Waterstone. Uh, I'm a recent, uh, gentleman who just moved here with my family to Oxford about less than a month and a half ago. So, happy to be here, and, uh, I apologize, I was unaware of this meeting until this morning when my wife texted me, and so I've been in the hospital all day and really haven't had a chance to prepare any, like, formal comments or make any real significant presentations of that type from a medical standpoint. Um, my comments are kind of largely somewhat more general than directed at the current petition, but I'll try to maybe tie more to the last, uh, petition in that sense. I think, uh, I echo the sentiment from a lot of the other, um, people who've been here, uh, made many of the comments that have gone on, but I think from my personal standpoint, I live in the Westlake part of the subdivision here of Waterstone, we have quite a bit of, uh, young children in many senses, and I think a lot of the, uh, neighbors and I have talked about it continually, about of, you know, recruiting and having other people who come and move here who have other little children, and development of, you know, communities that are here. Medical, you know, provisioning centers such as this may deter them from being here. I was unaware of these kinds of things going on, not that this may have necessarily fully deterred me, but it definitely would have caused a little bit more of a consideration pause before we moved up here to Oxford, uh, from down in the lower part of the metro Detroit area. Furthermore, from a medical standpoint, uh, I just had one question, the overlay, um, distances, what was the criteria that was used to determine how far apart they could be, and then what kind of research was actually implemented to determine that distance? Was there any medical consultation for that, in terms of how many, you know, could be given within the township, or how far apart that needed to be? It just seems, you know, a little bit excessive. We were considering three petitions tonight, and I don't really know what the criteria was that, I would have to answer that right now, but I just, that was a comment that I wasn't really sure.
Okay, I'm going to make note of it.
Um, from just a medical standpoint. Um, but furthermore, I think in many aspects, there's a lot of discussion in the medical community, and I think obviously publicly as well as, um, professionally, there may be some differences, but, you know, I hear a lot of words, curative and lifted, um, you know, in regards to these provision centers and what they can do, and I just, I want to offer a very strong word of caution, because I think that even though these are obviously, you know, regulated, they are obviously legal in the state of Michigan, they are still Class I scheduled FDA substances, right? There are substance abuse disorders that are associated with them, there are substance abuse conditions that are affiliated, whether that be anxiety, delirium, behavioral problems, whether that be dependence or other related changes. There are obviously lots of studies that have benefited and shown good use for cannabis and marijuana in certain medical conditions, but in many senses, I think that there is, in my personal and professional opinion, an overuse of cannabis in a day-to-day, you know, instance. I mean, I see it with a lot of my patients. I work in the near ICU, I've seen patients who've had, you know, cannabis and marijuana that's been laced with other substances, who have ended up in comatose states for prolonged periods of times on ventilators. It is not a, quote-unquote, "safe drug," it's not a, quote-unquote, "a natural substance" that is okay in many instances. If it wasn't, I wouldn't be here speaking to you tonight. So, I just wanted to make those comments and just make sure that that was heard, and I appreciate you taking time to listen to me.
I need to ask if there are any more people from the public at this meeting tonight that would like to speak in regards to the petition of PC 22008 that we have in front of us at this moment. All right, I'm seeing none, so I think we need to have a motion to close this public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:54 on PC 22008, 280 North Washington Street, Oxford, Michigan.
Do I have support?
A second.
I have a motion by Mr. Knoll, and I have a second by Mr. Ballard, to close this public hearing. Do I have everybody's?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Seeing none, we have closed the public hearing, which is our third this evening so far. Now, we need comments from Zach in regards to this public hearing. I think I tried to bring you up sooner, Zach, than later.
Yeah, I have a question for the chair. There were a lot of questions raised by members of the public. If you'd like, I can try to address them the best I can, uh, either now or later. Um, if you want it now, I can talk about this.
I think Zach, if you did it now, it might help, you know, with the audience we have in front of us, I don't know, so that they get an understanding, too, of what's going on, because I heard some of the similar questions I think you're going to comment about.
Yep, yep. So, I will first start, do my best to answer the questions that I quickly jotted down during there. If I've missed any that folks on the Planning Commission think are important, let me know. So, the Planning Commission held its public hearings for the amendments associated with medical marijuana last year, I believe it was in November and December. It got forward to the Township Board, they adopted it earlier this year. It is a bit different than what had been in the zoning ordinance previously, which, which focused on grow facilities with more than 12 plants. So, this, this went a bit broader, it allowed for medical provisioning centers within certain areas, and it allowed for larger grow operations within industrial properties. The, there was no committee to determine where, some, and no special committee to determine where distressed properties were. Instead, as part of the work developing this, there was a focus on, as compared to other communities where we just say, "Do it wherever," and then your entire town, town, becomes provisioning centers or marijuana uses, there's a deliberate attempt to have this be directed on those areas that are difficult to develop. So, first, the Ordinance Review Committee, and then this body, and then the Township Board, looked at maps that were specifically drawn. In this case, we know it's a difficult-to-develop property because it's been vacant for so long. It's a really small site for modern commerce or retail or restaurants. We mentioned, mentioned the, the traffic challenges, um, and that was the same for the other areas, that we knew that these are sites that would be challenging to redevelop because they've been vacant, they've been unused, they've turned over, uh, or their weird lot configuration that makes it difficult and undesirous for folks. Um, I will say that originally, there were actually four provisioning areas that were proposed, one that was farther north. The Township Board, as part of its deliberations, decided that that should come off. So, that's how we got with this three. There's no trip to the Zoning Board of Appeals for zoning amendments, zoning text map, zoning text amendments or zoning map amendments. The public hearing is held at the Planning Commission, that was done last year, and then the Township Board adopts it. Let's see, the separation distance, uh, the 12, 1,250 feet, as I mentioned, as part of the belt suspenders drawstring. Uh, there were no medical studies done to determine if that was the best distance or what that would do for saturation. Rather, we looked to other elements of zoning law in the state of Michigan, and the state of Michigan requires certain uses be separated by 1,250 feet. And so, we use that as a state has determined this is appropriate distance to keep certain things from being clustered, and that's how that got into there. Um, let's see. And it's only from other provisioning centers, it's not from other uses or residential areas, it was from other provisioning centers to stop clustering. It's like, similar to a lot of communities will say, "We don't want to have a lot of adult uses together, because we don't want to have a red light district, we want to keep them apart." It was that same kind of thing of, of keep them separated. Uh, let's see. As part of that zoning amendment process, um, the State of Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires you to do public notice for certain things that you're going to do. Generally, anything that requires a public hearing, you have to publish in a newspaper. That's, you can wake up in the middle of the night and write that down, it'll, it'll be the same forever. If you're doing a zoning map amendment, you may have to and you may not have to. So, the Zoning Enabling Act says if you've got more than 11 contiguous properties, and you can go across the road with that contiguousness, you don't need to provide notice to the property owners or to the adjacent properties within 300 feet. And all of the provisioning overlay districts had more than 11 properties, so the township elected not to do that notice. I described the legal process, how, how we got here. It is listed as a, a special land use, um, not necessarily related to the special land use, but the number of handicap parking spaces is within building code, and it's based on the number of spots in the parking lot. There's a minimum you have to do, you can do more if you want. Mr. Berger's a building official, so maybe he could speak to that later on, but if you're a rehabilitation center, and a lot of folks are becoming limping, you can put more, but you can't put less than what the code says. Uh, let's see. At this site, um, actually, one of the things, when you'll, when we get to the site plan review, is it's going to have two driveways, there are two driveways for the old McDonald's. It's not going to have any access from Helen to the north, and because it's being combined with the portion of property that's, uh, for the fire department now, there's actually going to only be two driveways there instead of potentially three, were that other property not part of this development. Uh, my understanding is that Supervisor Curtis has signed on for the application as the owner to say, "We're, we're aware that this is going, we, we allow the applicant to do this on our behalf." And that's very common in land development where someone doesn't purchase it until approvals are underway. So, it's kind of like you have the rights to develop it within a certain period. Uh, and my understanding is that the rear of the property, we do have a fire chief here, so can confirm this, it will remain with the fire department, and they're going to use it for training and probably even a training tower. I hear about that every now and then. Did I get most of the questions? Were there any that I missed?
I believe you did a pretty good job. I, I just have some things I'll make comment to a little bit, uh, later, when we, as commission members, make our discussion. You did a great job, thanks.
Um, and I will say, one of the tough things about being a Planning Commission member or ZBA member is that you're looking at the criteria. You're not saying whether or not you like the thing. My wife would never want to have a fast-food restaurant anywhere because she hates them. But if the law says you can do them, you know, this is an administrative body, not a policy body like the Township Board, so you, you have to look at the rules, whether or not you like it.
We didn't promulgate the rules.
Right.
We're just utilizing what they say they can do.
There's a, a fabulous saying that if you're a judge and you don't make decisions you hate, you're not a very good job, a judge. Okay, so, to the specifics for this one, um, it is located within the marijuana provisioning overlay district. Uh, it runs up along M-24 there, and the underlying property is actually within the C-1 and the C-2 zoning district. But for the use, it's, it's within the provisioning overlay, it is a special land use within It will be a standalone building. They are proposing to have a freestanding sign between the building and the right-of-way. And, let's see, as I mentioned before, uh, we don't, we, on the zoning side, have not received a security plan. Um, our understanding, again, is that's with the Sheriff Department as part of the review for the license, so that's something that we recommend as a condition of possible approval, be provided before site, final site plan review. And, let's see, for this one, it's, it's actually going to be shaped like a federal-style building, so there's not going to be any utilities on the roof. Instead, there're going to be utilities, and they're screened by, uh, on the ground, and they're screened by landscaping, shrubberies and fences as required in the zoning ordinance.
But we're not to the safety plan portion?
Correct, correct. But the marijuana provisioning says you have to screen.
Yes.
Anything on the roof, and there's nothing on the roof.
You're just making comments.
Oh, there's one more comment for the safety. So, as part of the safety plan, and this is required from the state of Michigan, I mentioned there are a lot of cameras on there. There'd be more cameras with, on the property if this were a provisioning center than if it were a bank. Basically, every bit of the property is going to be recorded, uh, the state of Michigan requires that to be recorded and to be available to the police for review. That's one I missed there.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I think you did a great job.
There's a lot of questions.
After reviewing the correspondence, what about Planning Commission members? Do you have any discussion at this time?
Not at this time, no.
Mr. Knoll?
Mr. Knoll, thank you.
On behalf of myself at this point, um, I, I was kind of grateful that you discussed on the distance portion of it, because that was very hard to decide on at one point in time when people were trying to figure out where we could have this overlay district included in the township, because we knew it was coming, we just didn't know where it was going to fit accordingly. I think you did a good job there. There was a question brought up about ownership as the petitioner, and honestly, I think that would be a question that we would probably have to utilize, and I would think that my attorney, or our attorney, would, uh, help us along that line, because I, that wasn't something I had thought about previously before this evening's meeting. So, I appreciate those kind of comments that were brought to us. And, uh, in regards to the, the particular location, when Mary got up and spoke and, and talked about everything that's around it, and with what's across the street, and what's next door, and what's behind it, and all this stuff, it's interesting to hear from that standpoint, because when we look at the other, uh, petitioner's request this evening in regards to what we heard for, uh, public comment, those things weren't said earlier in any of the, uh, two previous public hearings. So, I appreciate people when they get up and, and point things out to us. Obviously, we know the traffic flow there's been horrendous for a long time, in my opinion. They drive that corridor all the time, and, uh, people always speed, they always want to pick up speed before they're supposed to when they go around that curve. So, honestly, there's a, a hardship there, I think, with developing the parcel, because of that, uh, traffic flow that is created there, and there're certain times of day when it's pretty tough there. So, I appreciate everybody getting up this evening and making the comments that they did for us as members when we make our decisions, what we think are in the best interest of the community, so I appreciate you here this evening to do that. Thank you so much. We don't need a motion to close, we're already closed. We have to now move into the portion of this evening's meeting regarding new business. We're done with number, well, wait a minute, I don't think we have any unfinished, unfinished business yet this evening on the agenda. So, we're moving into new business, which is number 10 on our agenda this evening. So, at new business, we start all over again with PC 22006 as a preliminary site plan review, uh, with the applicant for Limited Industrial Partners LLC. So, now we start all over again with the petitioner in regards to the preliminary site plan review and who their representatives are for that this evening. So, who's, who is with the Limited Industrial Partners Group? Okay, thank you, sir.
Congressman again, representing, uh, Limited Industrial Partners LLC. Chris from TDG is going to present for us.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Don't do that to Mary now.
Yeah, I figured it'd be easier for...
You're going to use your own PowerPoint?
Yeah. So, this is the, the same as before, I just want to go through it again of the location, a drainer, um, reiterate, um, more of the site plan-related things. So, in terms of, um, things that are changing the site plan, um, like I said before, a portion of the building is being demolished, um, the parking is being rearranged, um, you can see we have our, uh, handicap spaces next to the entrance, there is a curbside pickup area noted in the rear of the building, um, we have noted the, uh, loading and unloading zones, uh, on the north side of the building. In terms of the, uh, green belts, what we did is we have the 20-foot green belt, um, to the east side of the property, which we then abutted our parking the best we could up to that, and then fit that in between... in those areas. And then as we looked at before, the landscape plan, like I mentioned, trying to utilize the green belt and the green spaces the best we can, and capturing what is required based on the amount of parking spaces we have, and the floor plans that we mentioned before, and the heights, and then the rendering showing that the glazing meets the requirements based on the marijuana zoning regulations, and then we have, there's no material restrictions or anything like that, so we're all good there.
Chris, talk a little bit about the north drive and purpose of that.
Yes, so the existing, as you can see in the existing building, the existing site plan, there is that drive on the north side. I don't know what it's being utilized for previously, but with our new layout, we have that as a fire lane, so there's no parking there. We do have that as our loading, unloading space, which we consulted the fire chief on. It is a one-way exit and is the fire lane.
And that's the parcel, that's the portion right on the north side next to the
Correct.
Wash facility that the gentleman got up and spoke about?
Correct.
Okay. So that's going to be just a drive only out to the west?
But not for general parking? It's just for...
Yeah, I see that. And we have a drawing of it, too, a little bit different rendering than yours, but our show's a little bit different. Our rendering is a little bit different than your rendering, so I'm wondering how we got...
You might be looking at the civil plans, which are kind of, these are the architectural set, the civil set.
Doesn't show the actual site plan the same way, then? Because you're islanded around the corners a little different, and some's a little bit different on the other end, and so, I mean, I have it on my plan right now in front of me, but I don't have it up on the screen. Probably happy to put it on the screen when we start talking. So at this point in time, planning commission members, do you have comments that you would like to make in regards to this particular preliminary site plan process? You're going to demolish? I have one question in regards to something on your building that you showed a rendering of. It looks like your front portion on the west side is a parapet that comes up off the building and the roof line drops down below it, and you're doing that just for a statistical view?
Yes, and also...
See where the windows are above, where, just go to the, past the retail to the north?
Yeah.
That's a parapet that just rises up off the building?
Yeah, so the building, I'm going to go back real quick to the, some of the existing photos. You can see, sorry, I went a little far.
They have an answered-style roof.
Right. They have that, but then behind it, there's actually a gable roof for the existing building, so we had to accommodate to kind of hide that. So our proposed is actually just going to the peak of that and then having a level line outside of that. So it is a parapet as it goes along the slope of that existing gable roof.
Okay, that's, because I was going to make comment from a code point of view, but I won't do it now because you've probably just answered part of the question. If a parapet's too tall and firemen can't get up and over the other side and get down on the other roof line safely. Okay, but you're saying that actually there is a roof behind that?
Correct.
There's a gable that comes into it?
Yes.
All right. Okay, are there any other questions at this time? Mr. Knoll?
I have some questions. The signage, and we've got three of these, so I may have gotten things confused. You have a sign on the building, weren't you planning to put a sign out front as well?
No, we removed the monument sign from the...
Monument sign's gone away?
Correct.
Then, one thing that I want to stress through all of these, and is very important, is the architectural features. These are going to be three new, potentially new buildings in the township. We're going to have one north, south, and one the center. And I'm very interested in architectural features that we complement the village, we complement the township on these new facilities going in. I know you're here for a site plan review, but that's one thing that I'm looking at. You had shown some pictures here that you had trees in front in between the sidewalk, and you do not have that here. What were your intentions with the landscape and the trees?
Correct. Yeah, we're still developing the exact, you know, how the landscape plan is. These were kind of developed at the same time, and to show the building, we don't have all of that shown here. But yes, there will be landscaping in front of the building along Low Pier roadside.
That north drive, if you go back to that picture, the north drive, is that going to be a directional drive? You're going to have that as a loading zone?
Yes, that's one-way exit only.
So you're, you will come in on the, for practical purposes, on the south entrance, and then your, your truck will drive around to the other side and then go out that way?
Correct.
Will you, will all traffic be going out that way? Is it a directional parking scenario, or what, what are you proposing?
I think ideally, it's just deliveries. It sounds like the plan is?
Outside of business hours.
Yeah.
The north fire lane is really just that and loading zone. You can see on the south side, our entrance and exit egress is depicted there with arrows going in and coming out. That's going to be the directional of the traffic flow.
Are there any plans to identify that as a fire, fire zone and loading zone?
Exit only.
Exit only?
Yeah.
I'm most certain of it. Once we get through site plan approval, we get to our permitting process. I'm certain that most fire marshals will request that this is a fire lane.
This is just for discussion?
Correct.
I see the chief shaking his head, so I...
Part of discussion, or?
No, as part of what's going to take place.
And to answer your question about how it represents the, trying to find the right theme of this building and how it represents the, let's use the term culturesphere of the community, we took, and we went in front of the planning, we had the special planning meetings, and we took renderings and pictures of existing buildings in that, you know, half a mile radius, and this is what we came up with just as a preliminary, so we could get in front of the special land use. But we do know that we have some more work to do to clean up our, before we go to site plan approval.
Right. We're here tonight for preliminary approval to see if you want to spend additional money and put something together.
More money?
Well, that's what it's all about, really. I mean, preliminary means now I move forward, you know? That's what people are trying to find out.
One more question, Mr. Turner.
And I understand that.
You're keeping the same curb cuts, correct?
Yes.
I believe we are keeping the same curb cuts as it is shown here and what was existing. We are going to have to upgrade all of the parking, and we've, like we've said earlier, we've reduced the square footage of the building, and so that we can...
About 3,000 feet, roughly.
Yeah. So about a third of the building we've reduced, so that we could add more green space to our property.
I have a question regarding parking, then. I mean, in that size building, and where, and how I looked at the floor plan, which you don't have in front of you right now, but when I looked at the floor plan, of maybe what it might be like when you're done building it, are you going to need that many parking spaces on that property? Because, you know, if you were to list actual parking spaces of what you think with employees, and then the people that would typically come to a facility like this, and the planning commission, and Zach helped me out, I believe we can address parking based on actual loads? Where we look at parking by square foot, by zoning classification and what's required for that type of business?
I can address that in my report.
You can address that in your report. So sometimes you might want to consider a little additional room around there without as many parking spaces as, I mean, all those, I mean, to me, your front entrance way is at the southwest corner.
I don't disagree with you.
And all the parking that's way to the back's either going to be employees or not customers that are all the way to the east. So they're all going to park in those other spots that are going to be, you know, right near the building or close by and come through there.
Mr. Berger, in a perfect world, as a real estate developer for many years, you know, ideally, we would move that building back, right? We would move it further back to...
It's already there.
It's already there. So, you know, our hands are kind of tied. It's very expensive to put in parking, right? You've got detention and paving and excavation and curb and gutter.
That's why I'm looking at it and saying, "Do you need really what you have on that plan?"
I think that's something we'll look into and have our civil engineers from the Oakenfrouse dig into that. But we do, when you do look, the most we could do is, in the very back of the building with those 12 spaces, we could create a little more green belt buffer, which, you know, we're definitely not opposed to, but I'm not the expert on how many parking spaces...
Hey, you're committed where the building's at in the front.
We are. I mean, you know, I purchased the building.
I drove down there today.
Yeah, it's not on a contract. I purchased the building.
I got that part.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else right now?
I have a question. In looking at your plan for demolition, on the south, sort of east side, it shows a stairway that would be removed. Now, I'm not familiar with the building to know, is there a basement under the existing building to where you're going to do some fill when you make a smaller building, or...
There's no basement to this building. When we purchased it, this building was actually, it seems like it was one addition after another addition, and there was some type of an apartment upstairs that's...
Really? Living space?
Okay.
Wow, wow. Glad we don't have that anymore.
So, yeah, it was just in that area on the south side, so we're demolishing that area, so there's no longer a second story.
Okay.
I think you're right about multiple additions. More than several, maybe. I don't know.
Correct.
Because that's how it appeared to me, too. Just, and I didn't get inside yet, so, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Just, and I know I was touching on a little bit, just some clarification. The loading zone and fire lane, how do you have a loading zone and a fire lane? Because if you've got a truck sitting there, you're not going to get a fire truck in there.
I don't want to answer that question in regards from me, but I'm listening to you, but Mr. Schultz is here. Do you want to make a comment, Pete, real quick?
I want to, or do you want my report?
I'll have to wait.
We can wait until you do your report.
I can answer that question for you. On the original, the very first couple of times we met with the preliminary planning and zoning guys from the township, everybody called it a loading zone. And then when we got into the traffic area, if you can look on this page here up on the screen, our loading zone is right in the back of the building where you have those hash marks. How this was depicted as a loading zone early on is really not what we would present it, you know, a formal planning commission. That north alley is going to be, I believe the conversation was already had with the fire marshal, that that's going to be a fire lane. I don't need that side entrance as a loading zone. We're not bringing in semis of goods.
But you're also going to use it as an exit where you could potentially have two or three cars trying to make a left turn that, again, are going to bottleneck a fire truck getting in there.
Yeah, and that's why it's been updated, and it clearly states that it's a, it's a fire lane.
You got, you got to wait for Mr. Schultz to get off.
I'll wait.
Any other questions on your end, John, or Mr. Ballard?
I don't have any questions right yet. I do have some comments. I mean, I do like the aesthetics of the building. I think it looks, I think it is a nice aesthetics. I do like that there's green space in front of the building instead of having parking spaces in front. Now it's green. Now there's landscaping as you're driving through, because I'm concerned about driving through, you know, driving through town as well, and seeing nice buildings, seeing beautiful landscaping, and having the parking on the side instead of right in the front. So I do want to, just wanted to make those, make that comment.
Thank you. Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
Any other comments at this point in time?
No.
Well, if we don't have any other comments at this point in time, I think we're looking for a motion in regards to the preliminary site plan. Oh, excuse me, we have a couple other, go ahead, sir.
Sorry for the way you dressed. Working all day. The building looks great. I have nothing against it, and you could pretty much answer all the questions on the, on the north end over there as far as being just the fire lane. Now, when we built, when my friend I bought it from, we had a setback. We're way back, so the building looks great, but it's going to go higher. It's going to block my building more. I think we should all have the same setback rules on that. Why can't they demolish the front and make it even? If they go square, it looks great, but it blocks my building more. And you guys, I mean, the city, the township, that's where the setback's supposed to be. If they're going to touch something on the building, they should have the same rules.
I want to make, I want to go back to something earlier. I think when I looked at what Mr. Michelle had turned in earlier in one of his documents, and I looked at setback requirements in regards to this building, I think he was meeting most of the setback requirements. Am I right, Zach?
I can, I can touch on that in my report.
Yeah.
As far as the height of the building, we've kept the same height.
Yeah, I got that part, because of where the gable is and the parapet and all that.
The renderings are a little bit...
When it's square, though, this angled right now, you square it straight up, it blocks my building more. You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying, but I want to make one quick comment. I know you're there, because I use you all the time.
Yeah.
Including today.
Yeah.
But I mean, I know when you come in, it's a little bit difficult from the point of the building on the north and the south. I mean, it's kind of been that way for a long time.
That's from the state, the state of Michigan. Yeah.
That's what happened?
That's the state of Michigan. So, yeah, if you, if they cut, touch that curb, you guys are going to be in a lot of trouble. Not for me, but from the state. They're very particular right there. We wanted, me and Bobby next door for Louise, we've wanted, my entrance should be on that side. Yeah.
But they wouldn't, M dot, that you're talking about?
M dot, yeah. Didn't let you guys, didn't let...
I know they're getting pretty touchy on any more cuts along the highway.
Yes, yes.
That's why he doesn't want to move anything, either.
Don't touch that curb, because you'll be...
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
Yeah. But, yeah, so, because I'm, my building's already, my setback is further, so I thought that was going to be the setback for everyone and sidewalks and everything. So if they square it up, it's going to block...
I'm, I'm listening to you, but we still have, we still have some other parties that we have to listen to in regards to this.
Yeah, I'm there every day. It's probably going to affect me more than any other party, to be honest with you. The, what's the traffic count? How many cars they expecting each day coming to that, to that building?
I can't answer that right now, because, now, Zach, don't, don't, I don't like to make mistakes in what I make comment to, but when we come in with a preliminary plan, is it required yet to have a traffic count study done for this particular site yet?
I'll, I'll touch on that.
You're going to touch on that. Thank you. So he'll help answer your question in just a minute.
That's it.
All right, well, then, Zach, I think we better start with you first.
Okay.
And then we're going to go, now, I think Mr. Sharp's going to get up and comment on this one next.
Yeah, I get to leave the parade on this one.
I will try to do the quick version since we've already touched on a lot of stuff here, so I'm going to try to play volleyball on a hot beach in August.
Fifty-four.
See, so again, to reset ourselves, this is for preliminary site plan review and special land use later on. Preliminary approval allows them to submit final. There are a lot of items in this report that focus on things that should be added to final. I'm not going to speak about that here, the others, it's in the report, they can read it. All right, so here we go. The site is considered legally non-conforming. It's smaller than what you could create today. It is within the marijuana provisioning overlay district, and for future land use map, it's within the village mixed use, which is an area that considers commercial and potential residential mixes into the future. Area width heightened setbacks. So there are a lot of footnotes to that fabulous chart you've got on page five. The building is, to use the fancy jargon, legally non-conforming. That means it was legal when it was built, but if you walked in today and wanted to build it from scratch, you couldn't. So like most zoning ordinances in the U.S., you're required to allow legal nonconformities to continue to exist, and you can allow modifications to them, you can allow additions to them as long as it meets current setbacks. Now, if you do a certain value improvement on a structure, then it's triggered where it has to fully comply. We've had discussions with the applicants on that. Mr. London, myself, are fairly satisfied that the proposed work on the building is going to be less than that trigger that requires the entire building to comply. So, it does meet minimum lot width, though. The lot coverage is appropriate. Now, if you do a certain value improvement on a structure, then it's triggered where it has to fully comply. We've had discussions with the applicants on that. Mr. London, myself, are fairly satisfied that the proposed work on the building is gonna be less than that trigger that requires the entire building to comply. So, it does meet minimum lot width, though. The lot coverage is appropriate. The front yard setback is less than what you could do if you walked in from a fresh piece of property, but it's already there. You can't go closer to the road. You couldn't, you know, extend the building longer and add new stuff within the required setback. But that's allowed to continue. The north or the left side of the building, as you're looking at it, that is also closer than what you could do today. It's a legally non-conforming condition. It's allowed to continue to exist. And it meets the building height requirements. There is nothing very interesting with natural resources on the property. There are some trees along the back lot line that are gonna be preserved, and the soils are very well drained. Mr. Sharp can talk about their stormwater management is to do some infiltration through trenches on the property. For access and circulation, it will continue to use those two existing driveways, because as we've all heard, MDOT is really cranky. From a planning side, we would really like to see one of them closed for reducing turning. But the fire chief likes to be able to get trucks around and pull them back out once you've pulled them in some, somewhere. I guess it's because it's a really big truck and difficult to back up. Your zoning ordinance requires that, for this type of a use, that you have a loading zone with a specific size, which is a semi-truck. As the applicants have said, they're not driving in an axle fully sized truck of marijuana to drop off it here. That's a lot of totes. They have the spot where they're gonna use for minivans and other smaller vehicles, but your zoning ordinance is always forward-looking. If in 20 years, this isn't a marijuana provisioning center, there may be a use that has to take deliveries. But our understanding is that it's just going to be used for circulation, that the in-and-out traffic is going to both use the other driveway, which is wide enough for that purpose. There is a sidewalk out front, proposing new sidewalk to connect to the building from that and along the front of the building. For parking, there are slightly more parking spaces than your zoning ordinance requires. For this use, your zoning ordinance says, for every 200 square feet of the building, you shall have one parking space. There are like eight or nine above that. This use doesn't require additional parking for employees, so just whatever your square footage is, that's what it requires. And for those of you curious, that's similar to what's required for convenience stores and grocery stores, that type of use. Let's see. One of the things the planning commission will need to decide is parking is required to be outside of a green belt area and those maneuvering lanes and circulation. As you've seen, there's going to be some parking that's within that required buffer. You have the opportunity to grant a modification of that if certain criteria are true, and I can go through that. You don't need to have the final decision now, but if you're really concerned about parking within the 20-foot green belt, you should let the applicant know, because they're gonna have to make modifications for final. Essential services and utilities, I'll leave most of this for Mr. Sharp. There, I will say, there do not appear to be any conflicts between the utilities and any of the structures or any of the landscaping that's proposed. For landscaping screening, they're putting in a lot more landscaping. Some of the parking that's currently between the building and Lapeer is going to be replaced with trees and shrubs and grass. Additional plantings are gonna go around. Their math looks appropriate. But again, it's not 20-foot wide as your zoning ordinance requires, but you have the opportunity to grant a modification for that. Lighting is not addressed currently. That's something that'll have to be added to the final site plan. Let's see. Any other bits? So, I will say this now, but it applies for all of them. If there are any concerns, I'm gonna use a wild example here. If you had a butcher, which is a special land use next to a bear pen at a zoo next door, or someone wanted to do a butcher next to that, one could make the case that the bear's not gonna be happy to see all this meat and smell all this meat. So, as part of your special land use, you're allowed to put more conditions to make sure that the special land use is compatible with the area. So, for the butcher, that could include, you have to put a solid wall and air filtration stuff. So, as you go through these, if there are direct concerns with how it could be made more compatible with the area or what would be needed to be compatible with the adjacent properties, know that you could use that as a condition. You could say, we want more landscaping or something like that. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, but does that have to be directed in the preliminary site plan approval process, or can it wait until we come through with final approval for the site plan process?
If there's something that's very important, you ought to document it as part of the special land use.
Specify the condition now within this motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. I think now we're gonna hear from Mr. Sharp. He's got a little memorandum in here somewhere hiding.
Good evening, Commissioners and Justin. Very nice to meet you for the first time here.
Same here.
You should all be in receipt of my review letter that was dated June 30th. Hopefully, Justin, you have that as well. Again, from an engineering perspective, we're looking at things kind of from a 5,000-foot view, 10,000-foot view right now. We'll look in more detail at the final site plan, and then even after that, there's a whole engineering process that has to be run through. So, I'll just bring a few of the items to your attention with regards to the engineering aspects. They, obviously, they have a lot of, just some, you know, cleanup on a lot of typos and things like that on the plans. Tom, earlier.
Yeah, I was looking at them.
You know, he had a red line markup there, and the applicant did receive our letter along with the markups there. So, I don't think that they'll have any objections, but I guess I would defer to them on that. With regards to the site grading, they gave us some preliminary grading ideas of where this water, where the stormwater is going to go, and everything appears that it's going to function properly. With regards to the sanitary sewer that's there, they're gonna use the existing sanitary lead that's already connected to the building. We have them put a monitoring manhole on there now, which wasn't a requirement back in the day. A monitoring manhole is something simply that they add to, so they, we can take samples out of there to make sure that there's no illegalities that are being dumped into the sewer or something, or if they trace something in the sewer system, we can go back and try to find who's doing it. They do it at commercial sites now for grease and so forth, so we do that on most commercial and, or all commercial industrial sites. With regards to the water, it's the same thing. They're planning on using the existing water supply that currently feeds the building that's there.
Is that well, then?
What's that?
Is that well or public?
It's on, it's on a water system, correct? Yeah, it's on the water system.
Thank you.
Right now. What else do we have here? They do need to show that on the plan, though, Tom. They didn't show the exact location of where the water, where the lead was coming into the building, so they will need to identify that on future plans. With regards to the stormwater, they are proposing a series of pipes and catch basins underground. They do show the connection to an existing catch basin on Lapeer Road. That would need a permit from MDOT in order to do so. And so, we will defer to the applicant. They'll have to work with MDOT to get that all figured out. If MDOT does not allow the connection to the, to the catch basin that is out on Lapeer Road, for reasons, obviously, they just improved the road and they might not want it torn up, then they would have to do some sort of an underground detention system in order to accommodate for their stormwater needs. Yeah, you can see that right in the middle. They have, Tom, if you can point the, I don't know if your cursor can do that, but, yep.
It's right in here.
Correct. So, they have some catch basins collecting the stormwater. It's coming to one in the center.
Right about there.
And then coming right out to the catch basin. That's in the curb out in, it's in the curb of Lapeer Road, so. But they will need permits from MDOT to do that. With regards to their payments and so forth, we've already talked that they're gonna, you know, be redoing the entire parking lot that's there. Because the parking is so close on the southerly side, they're required to put in parking bumpers so that the cars don't overhang onto the adjacent property that are there. There's safety path requirements. Fortunately, I believe for all of the applicants, MDOT put in new safety paths and sidewalks for them when they redid the road a couple of years ago. So, they're all gonna be compliant with that. I'll let the chief speak a little bit more to, you know, the maneuvering lane and the loading zone that's on the north side there. They are showing a dumpster pad, you know, a new dumpster in the rear of their property there with concrete in front of it. And really, that's about it. So, if there's any questions related to the engineering aspects, I'd be more than happy to answer those right now.
No, I think you covered it pretty good for preliminary.
Yep.
Because you got a lot of work yet to do for, you know, final engineering, for final site plan approval. But that's good. Thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate it. I think, Mr. Schultz, you're on this agenda, maybe coming up pretty quick here. Right here's your letter.
Evening, planning commission members. Justin, good working with you again. Typical stuff we normally put on there, make sure the address is displayed on the front of the building. Knox box has to be installed. In regards to the fire lane on the north side of the building, normally, if that building catches on fire, I'm not committing any of my trucks to go down that driveway anyhow to get back in there, because it's so, is so narrow and tight. But if I get it in the back and I need to get around there, it gives me access, A, for dragging hoses or doing anything back there. So, it will, and it says right on it that they are required to post no parking fire lanes, so there should be no problem with that. Also, in dealing with all the ones from the village of all the site plan approvals that we've done for them and talking to them, I've talked to fire chiefs from some of the other communities that have already gone through these processes. Everybody has conjured up, again, like you mentioned, the semi-truck coming in here and unloading tons of stuff. Most, all of them, every single one of them says that what's coming in is basically a minivan and a couple of totes. That's it. Or maybe a Sprinter van maximum, and even that's carrying a tote. And it's in there for, you know, 15 minutes to carry a tote into the building, and that's it. It's not huge quantities of boxes and boxes and carts dragging everything in. There's just the inventory, the volume is not, not that great. So, as far as blocking that whole area with a, you know, somebody loading or unloading, that's not a concern. Yes, the building is a two-story on that southwest corner, and I believe, once they get into it, it's pretty much gonna look like it used to be a house at one time.
Oh.
And that part of it's what's being torn down when they're, when they're removing that portion of it. So, the building's been added on to multiple, multiple times. And I believe at one time, it used to be like Tefan Motor Home Sales back in the 60s.
Oh, my.
Is where it first started before they built down there to the other building south of there, so.
Okay, that's what, you're explaining it pretty well, then, because you got the knowledge going back that far.
Unfortunately, when you get, when you get that old, that's kind of what you do. But other than that, then, we're good with everything else. The other thing is, my recommendation is the water main that's in the back of their pill, back of their property on Hubbard Spring, dead ends pretty much behind the car wash. If that could be moved farther south to the end of their property line and a hydrant placed down there would do us a lot of good if we had a fire hydrant down at that point.
So, that could be a benefit.
Oh, it's huge to everybody.
I think they're listening.
I hear them, so. Definitely, that's what we're recommending, is that water main gets extended behind there, so. And there is already an easement that exists.
And there's an easement already across that property?
Across Hubbard Springs property.
Or across them to extend it, and then they could just stub off with a hydrant?
Yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying. They'd put a gate valve and come off. Okay.
Correct.
We didn't hear, there wasn't a letter from the attorney. It was quite brief, and I think for the record, because it's dated July 1. And if we read it into the record regarding 653 South Lapeer Road, "We have reviewed the application proposed preliminary site plan for the above referenced property. We note that the security plan pursuant to the applicable portions of section," I think it says 5.35, I can't read it real well, "J1 of the zoning ordinance should be provided by the applicant, which they would have to do anyway, in addition to addressing comments provided by the township's engineer, planner, and fire department." So, that's Susan Morrison's letter that we have, and we've read that into the record, so we'll take that into consideration as part of the approval process this evening. And I think that's all the correspondence we have in regards to any consulting people that we have involved in this process right now. So, at this point in time, if there are certain concerns from the planning commission members, please make note of it to us, where there's only five of us here this evening, a couple people absent. So, we don't know what their concerns are specifically. We're doing this without them. But I think they need to be included in the conditions of a motion if there's something that we want specifically to take place. So, I won't be making that motion, but I'd be looking for someone to make that motion for us, and then if we want to amend it, once the motion's made, we can go into discussion on it. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak in regards to this before we make a decision up here? Okay, so, you would like to make comment, ma'am?
Are you making a decision tonight?
Not final. All we're making a decision on is whether we would allow this to move forward preliminarily. So, as a preliminary site plan approval process, that's what we're gonna do tonight.
Well, to clarify, this would be the last time for the special land use.
Right.
But the special land use isn't complete until there's a final site plan.
Did you hear that?
Yes. So, at this, at this point, though, so if it's approved or disapproved tonight, whichever, the final plan, this is kind of like the last step, assuming, I mean, the final plans submitted are just like an extra, okay, change this, change that.
No, not, no, not necessarily. When you say final step, I'm not sure how to answer that question. Are you gonna help with that, Zach?
Yeah, I'll try to get in frame. Sorry. The word.
So, the special land use is whether or not the property is appropriate for the medical marijuana provisioning center. Tonight, the body can decide on that decision. That's part of your draft resolution you can look at. You can impose conditions on that approval, but if you approve the special land use tonight, the special land use is done before this body. And it's kind of waiting, then, until the final site plan for it to be final, final, because every special land use also requires a site plan, and a site plan's not done until final site plan is approved. So, the special land use portion could be done tonight if you vote to approve it. The preliminary site plan, again, that's a gateway to doing the final site plan. And if you impose conditions upon this or any of the others as part of the special land use, like, say, we want you to have five palm trees on there, for whatever reason, that's something that they would have to show on the final site plan when they come back. So, any conditions you impose as part of the special land use would get checked when you see the plans again for the final site plan.
Did that answer the question, ma'am? And you're?
Yes, I guess I was a little bit, didn't, have not been to an event, so. See how, how this all works and when you're supposed to speak, and is this the last time or?
No, this is not the last time. That what we're doing tonight is approving whether we want this to move forward under a special land use to happen on this property.
And is there any thought in, about combining all three, like, why we're talking about all three of them tonight within less than two miles apart?
We have no control over combining different petitioners' requests. We have, all these came in individually under different petitioners. And we're looking.
Is there any thought in the decision-making process? Like, these are three, like, for Oxford, how big Oxford is, we're kind of a small town. Three within less than 1.7 miles, like, about from each other. How successful are all three?
Well, I, I think what we did, and when we looked at, we talked about distancing. That was brought up earlier and how that became effective and what we would allow within so many feet apart. That allowed so many places that would be available within the township to make this happen under a special land use. So, am I saying, I think I'm saying it correctly.
I think part of the question is, is this too many, or might some of them fail?
We don't, we can't answer that.
The shorter to answer to that is the township allows opportunities for folks to try to do businesses. If they do well, they do well. If they don't, they don't. So, someone could open a subway next to a subway next to a subway. If your zoning allows it, you gotta prove it, and whoever has the best subway gets If your zoning allows it, you got to prove it, and whoever has the best subway gets to make the sandwiches.
And then do we talk about at all the effects of, of the dispensaries, what, from maybe criminal aspect, or?
We don't. We don't talk about a criminal aspect, certainly not.
Who commonly runs dispensaries sometimes, like organized crime, or what more?
All right, I can't answer those questions. I'm sorry. That wouldn't be for us to answer questions in regards to how there could be criminal activities or something. I wouldn't have any knowledge of any of that.
Right. But if you're going to be the decision to implore?
She needs to come up to the podium.
You're going to probably have to come up and address yourself at the podium if you want to continue questioning.
All right, that's, that's fine. Let's track around how this works.
Okay. So I think, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Would you please come up to the podium? Thank you.
My name is Shirley Boelterstein. I live over at Stony Lake Village. If you approve tonight this special land usage for these dispensaries of marijuana, and then they come back with additional site planning, and if you don't like it, you can disapprove it, and they no longer can open up business in Oxford, or what happens? If we're to this point now, where we're at the site plan, they're guaranteed that they can come back to you and, I guess, get something approved so far as their final site plan, and then they could open. I'm just saying, if today you approve it, but then you don't like any of the site plans that they bring to you, what happens? That's what I'd like to know.
I think we'd have to have a vote of the PC members to approve that plan. If everybody wasn't satisfied by a vote that would allow that to happen, then it wouldn't be approved. So, I mean, this meeting tonight is to make sure that whether we think this is compatible within this location, to have a special land use for this type of business to be in this zoning district.
And he also?
It doesn't, it doesn't put us to the final site plan approval process yet, until they come back with that plan. So we still have time to discuss that plan, and maybe make other things that would have to be modified to make it become satisfying to us.
So right now, it's not guaranteed that they will open up business here in Oxford, is what you're telling me?
Well, the writing's pretty close to being on the wall with it, when you expedite all this time and effort and go this far with it. But I wouldn't tell you it's definite right this moment, no.
And this thing about the legality of if you had over 11 sites. Now, would that be 11 sites just concerning for any type of business? He said because you had over 11, you didn't have to do one legal thing that I think you normally would have to do. And he said, because we are over 11, is that 11 sites for just any type of business? Or was that just only for marijuana to be coming in as a business?
Well, I want to be careful how I answer your question, but we're Oxford Township, and we're not part of the municipality of the village of Oxford. So we have three sites asking to be located within the township right now currently. Three. That's all we're looking at. We're not looking at any other sites.
The other?
Well, we really, technically, they're not part of our municipality. And whoever grants that within another municipality, and how they do it and handle it, is within their own justification on what their rules and regulations allow to happen.
Well, if you're only three in, in the part of Oxford, yet there are 11, and they were considering your three as part of the 11, correct or incorrect?
I think you're correct. It's a lot of competition.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
And it seems to me like?
I'm sorry, Zach, what?
I think there's cross wiring there, a couple of number of levels.
Oh, okay. I don't know. Yeah.
But it seems to me, look, the planning commission, looking at that, knowing that you had all these sites that, you know, well, you've only got three of them, but, you know, I think even three is excessive for Little Oxford, to be honest with you. And then having the one, all the ones in Lake Orion, I mean, I think it's very excessive. I really do. I think it's something that the, maybe should have been considered. That's my feeling as a resident.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I may. I was not prepared for this either, but this is just too much. So when I drive to Farmington Hills, Auburn Hills, Rochester Hills, we don't see any cannabis business. So now, through my little Oxford, I'm going to drive, and there are going to be three cannabis businesses? Does, when does the community get involved to say, I don't like that for my kids? I mean, we just survived the shootings on November 30th. So I don't see that cannabis businesses are going to bring anything much like better to our community. So when does the community, when do we have the opportunity to say, we don't want this? Because it's obvious, we don't want this. I live here in Westlake. I was happy to be in quiet Oxford. November 30th came. Now, three businesses knocking on our door. When does, when does the community have the opportunity to say, I don't want this? Because I don't. When? I mean, I, we don't have really any?
Well, I, I think what happens, and we don't promulgate all the rules for the state of Michigan, but when the state of Michigan went and had people vote in regards to what they wanted within the state, there was a turnout of people that voted in response to conditions with cannabis and marijuana.
Yeah, but when all the rules about the 1,250 feet came, who voted on that? I mean, those are awfully close.
That condition actually was established about a year ago and went through the township board as part of the overlay district.
And those, those meetings are only announced through newspapers, the super ancient way that nobody finds out.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to speak.
Township board meetings are held monthly?
Yeah.
The, the second Wednesday of every month?
Okay, very good. I'm going to start becoming a regular here to push on those things. And then, can I collect signatures or something? I need to figure out how to stop this, because this is, this is me. I mean, I'm from Mexico. I know about drugs, okay? So they don't bring anything good, legal, legal or not.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I don't know if there's any more discussion in regards to this particular site or not, but if there is not, I would be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a motion here that I'd like to work through, so I asked the board members and Zach if we need to, to help the old guy here read this through. That'd be great. I make a motion and a resolution for special land use and preliminary site plan for a marijuana provisioning center submitted by Thomas DiAgostino on behalf of Lift Industrial Partners, Number Two, LLC, for the property located at 653 South Lapier Road, Section 26 of Oxford Township, parcel number 0426303005. Whereas the applicant, Thomas DiAgostino, on behalf of the Lift Industry Partners Two, LLC pursuant to the provision of Oxford Township zoning ordinance, submitted an application for special land use and preliminary site plan on June 14, 2022. And whereas the applicant submitted an 18-page site plan on June 14, 2022, with a last provision date of June 13, 2022, prepared and stamped by Michael Peterson, a licensed professional engineer. And whereas the applicant has submitted an application for a marijuana provisioning center license, which was approved by the Oxford Township Board of Trustees on July 13, 2022. And whereas the planning commission has received a report from Zach Michel, our planning consultant, dated July 5, 2022. And whereas the planning commission received a report from Jim Sharp, engineer consultant, dated June 30, 2022. And whereas the planning commission has received a report from Pete Schultz, Oxford Fire Department Chief, dated June 29, 2022. And whereas the planning commission has received a report from Susan Morrison, Township Attorney, dated July 1, 2022. And whereas the site is located with a C2 general commercial in MP marijuana provisioning overlay district. And whereas the marijuana provisioning center, or a special land use in the MP marijuana provision overlay districts. And whereas the planning commission, at its July 14, 2022 meeting, held a duly notice public hearing for special land use and did receive public comment. And whereas the planning commission, at the July 14, 2022 meeting, reviewed a preliminary site plan and did receive public comment. And whereas the planning commission has authority to approve or deny a special land use as provided in Section 4.1I and Section 19.4C, special land use review of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission finds the special land use meets or would meet with conditions noted in this resolution, standards of 4.5A through 4.5G of the zoning ordinance, finding the facts. And whereas the planning commission finds the special land use meets or would meet with conditions noted in this resolution, the applicant standard of Section 5.35 marijuana uses and Section 6.26 marijuana regulations of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the planning commission has authority to approve or deny preliminary site plans as provided in Section 12.3B3, Planning Commission Actions, and Section 19.4B, Site Plan Review of the Zoning Ordinance. And whereas the approved of a preliminary site plan allows an applicant to submit a final site plan. Whereas the planning commission grants a waiver for information missing from the preliminary site plan as allowed in Section 12.3B, Item 2, information required of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission finds a preliminary site plan meets or would meet with conditions noted in this resolution, the standards of 12.05A through 12.05O of the zoning ordinance site plan approval standards. Now therefore, it be resolved that the planning commission, by a majority vote, at a duly notice regular meeting, held this 14th day of June 20, of July 2022, approves a special land use for Lift Industrial Partners Two for property located at 653 South Lapier, Section 26 of Oxford Township, parcel number ID 0426303005, subject to the conditions listed below. A, marijuana provisioning center should comply with this ordinance, the Township Code of Ordinance, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, the Michigan Marijuana Facilities License Act, and successor ordinances and acts. B, this approval is only valid if a final site plan is approved by the planning commission. C, the applicant shall provide an annual proof of compliance with all applicable state and local license regulations. D, the applicant shall provide a security plan as defined in 5.35, Item J1 of the zoning ordinance for review and approval. And E, the approval shall only be valid upon acceptance of the applicant of any conditions of this approval and sign of this resolution. Now therefore, be resolved, the planning commission, by a majority vote, at a duly notice regular meeting held the 14th day of July 2022, approves the preliminary site plan for Lift Industry Partners Number Two for property located at five, excuse me, property located at 653 Lapier, Section 26 of Oxford Township, parcel ID 0426303005, subject to the conditions listed below. The comments identified in consultant and agency's review shall be addressed in the final site plan. And B, the preliminary site plan approval shall expire and be of no effect after 365 days following this approval. I'm done.
So John, well, wait a minute. I need a second to the motion before we can discuss it.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Knoll, and seconded by Mr. Turner. So before we cast a vote, and we're going to do a roll call vote, are there any commissioners that would like to make comments or have concerns about what the motion was that John made? Now, it was very lengthy, and it was a little difficult at some points to keep up with it, but I think some of the last points of criteria, what he read, are very important, what I was trying to pay attention to. So if there are any comments from anyone, let's hear it at this point in time, because I think John did quite a job to put that thing together.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Zach for his help on this.
Okay, well, I want, I want to make comments that it was still a difficult job to put it all in place.
But I would like to add to this. This is for special land use.
I got it. That's what the very important part of your last comment was.
And preliminary site plan for this project.
Right.
Okay.
So this approves two things. This approves two things.
Yes, yes, it does.
Preliminary site plan.
And the preliminary.
No, you're going to say special land.
Special land use and the preliminary site plan. Yes, sorry.
Within the motion.
Right.
I think that, do you understand that too, Corey?
Yeah.
You're in, okay. And I'm sure Mr. Ballard understands it.
I do.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, and we've had discussion. I guess, Susan, I'd like you to call the roll.
Give me two seconds.
You're not going to have the reporting secretary with the motion back?
Absolutely not.
Well, if you want to, but?
Absolutely not. We have it on record.
Okay. Bailey?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Berger?
I'm yes, too.
Motion passed.
All right. That's new business A. Now we're on to new business B.
Mr. Chair, I've got to run and get some water if I'm?
Okay, we're going to take about a five-minute break, maybe six, seven minutes, whatever it takes, before we do the next, uh, piece of business here. So it's, please be back here at least by quarter after nine, if you could, please. Business section, we have B, the preliminary site plan review process for applicant through Mr. Carrative, LLC at 16, oh, and, excuse me, not where he's at, for our property located at 1225 South Lapier Road. Is the, is the petitioner, okay, a representative is here for the petitioner.
Good evening, Mr. Berger, members of the planning commission. Jim Butler with PEA Group, we're the civil engineers for the project. Just got a short little presentation. The site is located on the east side of Lapier Road, south of Drainer. As Mr. James had pointed out, is a, a former gas station site, and there are two buildings that are currently on the site. Those will be torn down as a part of the development. We are proposing a single-story, 3,740 square foot building. As you'll note on the plan that we've presented, we are going to be utilizing the existing drive that was put in as a part of the M24 improvements. For those of you who don't know, or probably do know, there used to be two very skewed drives when the Clark Gas Station was there, but when M24 was improved, they put in this single access drive. We are proposing 19 parking spaces on the site. The site will have its own onsite stormwater management. We do have a connection to the existing pathway that was put in as a part of the M24 improvement. We are meeting all the setbacks and landscaping requirements for the zone, underlying zoning district. And a rendering. This is the rendering of the building. This is facing, you're standing at the southeast corner, looking northerly. There is an entry point there. This building is constructed of high-quality materials, glass, brick. We'll go back to the site plan and present one other thing. We do have an access drive around the building. There is a, two spots located on this part of the site. This would be the west side, two parking spaces for a drive-up pickup. There is a loading zone on the north side, and then the access drive, which is a one-way drive going back to the access to Lapier Road. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Do you have any questions about the building? We have the architect here with us also, and the contractor.
Thank you for that, Mr. Butler.
Yes, sir.
You're going to have that loading zone, it's all hashed there on the north side, and then you're going to still be able to drive around it, it looks like, too?
Yes.
Is that going to be labeled as one-way then somehow?
That's going to be a one-way drive. For this graphic, we didn't show it.
So all your, all your people that come and go are going to come through that, that approach off M dot there, right?
Correct.
As an in and out?
Yeah.
So ingress and egress is all right there?
All ingress will be just from the access onto the road.
All right, I got it.
Okay.
Planning Commission members, how do you want to handle this right now? You want to hear from our representatives? How do you want to do this, members? Hear from our representatives?
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
Want to start us out, Zach? You're the, you're one of the top leaders here.
Yeah. Mr. Knoll got some water in that break?
He did.
All right.
More to come.
So the, the existing property, um, let's see, as you mentioned, the existing buildings are going to come down. It's basically going to be scraped clean and rebuilt. are going to come down, it's basically going to be scraped clean and rebuilt, uh, new building, new parking, uh, all the landscaping is going to be installed. Let's see, for the meats and potatoes, onto the table on page 5, the setbacks, there are far fewer footnotes this time, the building, it's a new building, meets the required setbacks, the parking meets, is outside the green belts, we'd like to see, um, all the green on the column there saying yes. Um, nothing real significant with the site itself, it does slope to the back a bit, but that's just the last couple of feet. Um, again, really good soils for infiltration onsite, Mr. Sharp can address that for stormwater. For access and circulation, it's going to use the existing driveway, uh, we already touched on the fact that you, it's going to be one-way going around. For parking, um, it provides the required amount of parking for the square footage of the building, uh, the parking is outside of the required green belt and the required trees for the parking is installed. Um, the one thing I will say, well, I really like that little island that's landscaped in there instead of a massive parking area. Um, little note is just a slight rotation in the angle of the dumpster, because right now you're kind of backing off that island, um, something that could be addressed for final site plan. For essential services and sewers, I'll let Mr. Sharp address that, uh, but it does not appear that any of the landscaping or proposed structures are going to interfere with the utilities on the site. Landscaping screening, there's a mix of plantings, again, evergreens, more for the screening on the backside with deciduous trees on the front and shrubs. Uh, the math appears to be appropriate for what's required for the site based on the frontage and the screening. Uh, lighting plan is not included in the preliminary, that would be, have to be added to final site plan. And, two, that's all I've got, there are, again, similar to the last one, some minor things that are not included on here, um, but they are eligible for waivers as well, as long as you guys have ability to determine compliance with the site plan and special land use. And if there are any conditions that you think are really important for being, as a special land use, add them to the motion. Um, site-specific things, like adding, um, signs that say fire lane or whatever, that, that will be addressed in final. That's my quick version.
Thank you. Jimmy, would you like to get up next?
Mr. Sharp, I meant.
It's okay, honey.
You got me.
Uh, again, uh, we're looking at this from, you know, kind of a high level right now, just to make sure everything's going to function from an engineering perspective. Uh, again, you should have our letter that stated this one also June 30th, um, and I'll just hit a couple of, of comments here. Uh, one of the items that was brought up earlier by Mr. Rice, uh, we had the same comment with regards to, uh, you know, the remediation of the site, that we will want to see some documentation that has been remediated properly from the old tanks and so forth that were in there, and obviously if anything was encountered during construction, then it would have to, you know, go through the whole Eagle process to do that. So that is something that we did bring up in our, in our letter as well. Again, the, the site grading itself, um, don't see any real issues with this. The sanitary sewer, they're proposing a new lead out the building to the north side that's going to connect into, uh, an existing eight-inch sanitary sewer. Uh, with regards to the, the water line, uh, they're going to be running a new two-inch domestic service that's going to connect to an existing 12-inch water line, also along M24. Uh, any of the work that, that occurs within the M dot right-of-way, they're going to need a permit for any of that, uh, for any of that work. With regards to the storm sewer, um, as, um, Zach had said earlier, the, the soils are good there, but how, we will need a, a geotactical report, they're proposing a series of dry wells, again, to allow the water to collect through an underground type system and then percolate into the soils there. So they are not currently proposing to tap any, uh, catch basins or anything out in the M dot right-of-way there, but we will need additional information as they work through the process on that. And with regards to, uh, the pavement, it's all going to be curbed around there, going to have some asphalt, um, in the parking lots, you got, Zach mentioned the dumpster pad, um, in the rear, I guess, yeah, the rear of the property there, the southeast corner, and the bike path already exists as M dot had put that in. Um, but that, again, pretty quick overview there, but, uh, you know, we believe that they can achieve all of the engineering requirements that are required of the township as they work through the process. So, anything else? Any questions?
I have none, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Did you, sorry, did you have something?
No, I'll say.
Uh, Mr. Schultz?
Yes, again, this one is pretty brief, uh, again, the address being on the front of the building, Knox Box, um, one thing on this area down there, there are no hydrants on the east side of the road down there, so my recommendation would be as long as they're boring under the, to put a domestic, why not just bring a six-inch main across there and get the domestic, and then get a fire hydrant over there on our side force over there, because I've got nothing to hook to, I'll be laying hose across 24 down through there, so, that's my request.
Chief, do you remember how long this one's been vacant?
Wow, I bet you he does.
Yeah, 2015.
Yeah, I was saying. 2015?
Seven years.
Okay. I knew it was a while, I just didn't know how long it was. Thank you.
It's ripe for development.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Knoll?
Can we go back to Mr., uh, question Mr. Sharp answered? They were going to bore under 24 to go to the other side for a main, for their water, if I remember right?
Yeah, I just come up to the podium so I don't yell from the crowd. Yes, that is true, uh, there is no water main directly in front of the property, it's actually a 12-inch water line, water line that's on the west side of the road.
Can they bring a six-inch cross and put a hydrant up? Is, as the chief asks?
I believe that they could, yes.
All the way across 24? Underneath it, under, so you have to, you have to bore through both lanes and all the ways?
They would set up, uh...
Boring, right.
They would set up a pit...
Yeah.
On their property, most likely, and then they would set up another pit on the west side of M24, so if they don't interfere with any of that traffic, they set their machine down in there, and then they bore underneath, underneath the roadway.
Do they have, currently do, if it was operating, would they have well, or would they have water, regular city water there today?
That was...
It's currently on the community well system.
It is on the township well, uh, township water system?
Yeah, well, yeah, township well system, community well system.
But maybe it's a small, maybe it's an old lead, but on the plan, they were showing that they were boring a new lead across the street.
That was originally just a two-inch tap, though.
It was a two-inch.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, but I think if John puts his motion together correctly...
It'll have to be an eight-inch coming across, then.
It would have to be an eight, off the 12?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So rather than, well then you'd have an eight, you could go either way with it on the other side if you had to.
Or the eight across, and then they just, instead of boring the two-inch across the road, now they're just going to connect their two-inch into the new eight-inch that comes across the road.
I get all that, yeah. And I know Mr. Butler could say yes to that.
Yes.
See, I told you.
There's your answer.
There's your answer.
I don't promise.
Oh, but no promises. I guess after everybody has presented what they have in front of us for this preliminary site plan review and approval for this special land use, is anybody, do you guys have any more questions you would like to ask?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a couple of comments, but we have a gentleman in the audience that wants to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, sir, come on up.
Again, Rick Rice, I am the neighbor to the left, which is the north side of the property. I have a couple of concerns. Uh, first of all, there's an electrical easement that goes completely across the middle of that building right now. It actually goes to another adjoining property owner, there's a pole there, there's a pole right there at the middle of his building, and there's a pole in front of my two buildings. We've met with Edison, they talked years ago about bringing it in from the back once they put the new system back there, and it's never happened. Actually, Joe and I actually met with DTE, and they have no record of that even, that conversation ever happening. But that's what they told me. So the issue I have is, where's this electrical coming in?
What's the issue? I'm just curious.
Where's the electrical coming into your building? And how are you keeping the line across? Are you going all across Mr. Zach's property across the other side?
All right, you're going to, yeah, go ahead and answer it now, it's a concern, it's fair to ask.
Second of all, the building's just way out in front of my buildings. The board actually, when I went in for a sign permit, uh, decided that they didn't want a sign permit out there, this is when the sign issues were all going on, so I was allowed to put canopies on my building for backlit signs. This is going to block my whole building. You're not going to be able to see anything going down M24 of my property. If you look how far it sticks out, it sticks out probably 30, 40, 50 feet closer to the road, so I'm going to have no visibility for my signage. Is the township going to grant me a permit for a sign, or do I just get stuck?
Well, I can't answer that question this evening, because that's a...
And like I said, the issue with the fire hydrant, there is no fire hydrants on that side, I absolutely believe we need a fire hydrant on that side, there has been fires along that side of the road. One thing about the electrical issue again, is my telephone pole, actually, the one that left me on my other vacant lot actually came down on New Year's Eve, fell on top of the, uh, Harvest Time property, caught the roof on fire. I actually spent all of New Year's Eve out there watching the site, because it, power was down for three or four days. Three months to the day, after I examined my pole, and I actually could take a screwdriver and stick it all the way through, that telephone pole fell on my building and doing thousands of dollars worth of damage. Didn't catch it on fire, but it was really close. So those, electrical issue's a real problem for everybody, including Mr. Sye. So whatever you guys choose to do with that, I just made my comment.
Mr. Butler?
Sure. Um, we are working with DTE for the relocation of that line, to take it back along the south side, take it along the west side, and come back along the north side. We will be setting a transformer.
All right. Say that again for me, please.
We're going to be, there's, currently there's power lines that run across the front of the property. We are going to take that line, relocate it along the south property line.
Okay.
Take it along the north, and then come back along...
Okay.
The south side. Uh, there's a transformer here that will be used for our building. There's also an underground, existing underground service lead that goes across the Salvation Army, we're going to have to tie into that as well, and reconnect that, so...
Or they wouldn't have anything.
Oh, they don't have anything.
Yeah, okay.
That's...
So, are you, you're working with a, currently working with a service planner?
We're working with a DTE service planner.
All right, and, okay.
We submitted all the easement documents to them.
Okay.
Okay.
So there, you're creating easements to allow this to happen as part of the right-of-way for the DTE to make this take...
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Berger, that is identified on sheet C6.0, or it says proposed relocated overhead electric, so they do show that on the...
Okay, that helps, that helps answer the question, thank you. But actually, the, the electrical problem is theirs, not ours at this point in time.
Correct.
So they're the ones that have to remedy that with DTE. But Mr. Rice is pointing it out that there is a problem there, so I get it.
And related to building setback, obviously, we're meeting the requirements of the underlying zoning for setback.
I, I did hear that earlier from Mr. Michelle.
And understand also that Mr. Jose, the owner of the property, did acquire as a part of the M24 work, M dot sold him a sliver of land.
Oh.
So that's how his property has gotten bigger, and if you recall, it was a little bit narrow, difficult to develop.
To get that green belt in there, okay, because he didn't have room before to do that.
He did not, so that any building would have potentially been setback even.
So the right-of-way got moved a little bit.
Mr. Say, a purchased property for the purpose of trying to make the property more developed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other people that want to make comment at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to reiterate the, um, architectural features of this building site, it's, it's a showpiece for coming into the township, I'm going to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing, uh, I don't know how to say, over and not under, but fits, fits what we need to have in our...
Yeah, I saw that first, uh, elevation view, yeah, thank you.
I understand, I...
Do you have specific questions about it, or would you like to talk to it?
The only question I have is, you go back to the other drawing that you had, uh, top, top, uh, the top view?
Yeah.
I think there's a tree up there on that turnaround, I don't know if you want to leave that there, that might be something that, as the fire and different vehicles try to turn on the east side...
Oh, okay.
On that little island there, that might be a little much, it looks like it's covering up the...
Yeah, that's what he's talking about, yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Not a big deal, you'd figure it out with the fire truck going through there.
Well, John, we, we still have time to work, I mean, the building looks pretty good to me right now.
It does.
It has some nice architecture. He's got a shadow, he's got a, he's got a soldier coming across there, he broke it up, he's got a shadow line coming out, he's done some good things, he did some stuff up on top, you know, with some brickwork, where he's done some, see how he carved it out?
Yep.
He's got a break, he's got a breakdown on the other, it, it looks good, he's, he's done the corners, he broke those out with some shadow, uh, distinction.
Plenty of parking.
It's pretty good. I like the area, I like the width of all the walks and everything through there. If that's the rendering, that, it's going to be similar, too. So I like, I like the wide walks and people can get in and out easily, because this doesn't mean this has to be this type of facility forever. I mean, it could change and be another facility down the road, you know?
That's...
And that's what I look at, because you have to look at what may happen down the road. And it would still be an attractive building, and I think still be a, a building for good utilization, no matter what the retail established business was, or whatever the businesses that goes in there. So I, I think it's, it looks good. John, are you, are you going to try to...
We have one...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice?
Just one more comment.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on the original site plan that you had there, it looked like there's bushes, or are there going to be trees in the front of the building on M24 side?
There was a variety, it looked like.
Because if it's trees, it's going to completely block my building, and I really can't have that. If there's small bushes, great, they'd look great, just as good as a tree, but I don't think...
Well, we don't want, we don't want things in, in, in view of, uh, vehicles ingressing and egressing.
In the clear vision zone.
In the clear vision zones.
I was talking about seeing my building.
Yeah, I got it.
I'm going to get hidden back in the corner. There's a whole line of trees there, it looks like.
Yeah, there are deciduous trees, and it's pursuant to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. There's a certain amount of trees we have to have on the street frontage.
Okay, I get that part, we're familiar with that.
Just a, see if I can get the mouse on here, so, uh, as mentioned, this property now does go out, almost a back of curb, the adjacent properties, this is where the right-of-way ends, it's basically in the middle of the parking lot, and same for this property. Um, so I'd highly recommend everyone get with Mr. Say and, and purchase that property as well, go through whatever process. Um, you know, one of the challenges for putting a monument sign here is you have to be a certain distance back from the right-of-way, and when the right-of-way is actually halfway through your parking lot, it puts your monument sign at the front of the building. So it is, it is a challenge here, um, there are a lot of spots, M dot wanted as wide a right-of-way as it could, they're realizing they're not going to have 10-lane roads everywhere, so they are begrudgingly allowing folks to get some of that back.
Good point. Mr. Chair, I, I, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I, I think the landscaping can be worked on later on, when we get things more mature.
Well, yeah, we have a right to make landscape modifications if we feel necessary.
Right. I don't see a problem.
It looks like the, he's got shrubs in a row there on the one piece to the north, and then it does have the deciduous, because he's looking at what the township ordinance requires.
Yeah.
So he's planting what's required.
Right.
Now, we, we have the discretion as the Planning Commission to then change and modify those requirements when we come through with a final site plan, if we feel it's necessary to help people out. Now, if you're, I got to ask a dumb question, if you're going to put all that landscaping in there, is it going to be able to be irrigated?
Yes.
Okay, that's, because without it, half that stuff on that corridor might not even make it.
Of course.
All right. All right.
If it's of any assistance and makes for a good neighbor, we're, we're more than willing to find a solution.
Trying to help out, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I can make a motion.
Wait a minute, Mr. Rice, you still have another comment?
Just another comment on the trees. I know several properties up and down M 24 from Brainer Road and then Mr. Zatko's properties are down the way. There's not one single tree along M 24 through that whole corridor. There was nothing that was ever required, there's not a single tree. There's a few shrubs, but that's it. So this is gonna look out of place if you start putting trees out in the middle, building a forest around one property. So that's just a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Mark, the process is right at the corner, right at the northeast corner.
Well, I'm not, we're not gonna get into that right now. Mr. Noel?
Yes, I can make a motion if you-
All right, thank you, sir.
This is a resolution for a special land use and preliminary site plan for a marijuana provisioning center submitted by Jose on behalf of Curdevin LLC for property located at 1225 South Lapeer, Section 35 of Oxford Township, partial number ID 0435127022. Whereas Jose, on behalf of Curdevin, is this pronounced right, Curdevin? Thank you.
Curative.
Curative, yes.
Curative.
Curative, I got it, no.
Curative LLC pursuant to the provision of the Oxford Township zoning ordinance, submitting an application for special land use and preliminary site plan on June 16, 2022. And whereas the applicant submitted a 12-page site plan on June 6, 2022, with the last revision date of June 13, 2022, prepared and stamped by James Butler, a licensed professional engineer. And whereas the applicant has submitted an application for a marijuana provisioning center license, which is, which was approved by the Oxford Township Board of Trustees, July 13, 2022. And whereas the planning commission received a report from Zach Michel, planning consultant dated July 5, 2022. Whereas the planning commission received a report from Jim Sharp, engineering consultant dated June 30, 2022. And whereas the planning commission has received a report from Pete Schultz, Oxford Fire Department Chief, dated June 29, 2022. And whereas the planning commission has received a report from Susan Morrison, Township Attorney, dated July 1, 2022. And whereas the site is located within a C 2 general commercial and MP marijuana provisioning overlay district. And whereas the marijuana provisioning center are a special land use in the MP marijuana provisioning overlay district. And whereas the planning commission at its July 14, 2022 meeting held a duly notice public hearing for special land use and did receive public comment. And whereas the planning commission at its July 14, 2022 meeting reviewed the preliminary site plan and did receive public comment. And whereas the planning commission has authority to approve or deny special land uses as provision 4.4i and 19.4c, special land use review of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission finds special land use meets or would meet with conditions noted in this resolution, the standards of 4.5A through 4.5G of the zoning ordinance finding effect. And whereas the planning commission finds a special land use meets or would meet with conditions noted in the resolution, the applicant standard of 5.35 marijuana uses and 6.26 marijuana regulations of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission has authority to approve or deny preliminary site plans as provided in 12.0, excuse me, 12.3B section, item 3, planning commission action and 19.4B site plan review of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the approval of a preliminary site plan allows an applicant, to submit a final site plan. Whereas the planning commission grants a, a waiver for information missing from the preliminary site plan as allowed in section 12.3B, item 2, information required of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission finds the preliminary site plan meets or would meet with conditions noted in this resolution, the standards of 12.05A through 12.05O of the zoning ordinance site plan approval standard. And now therefore be resolved that the planning commission by a majority vote at a duly notice regular meeting held July 14th day of, excuse me, held 14th day of July 2022, approves a special land use for-
Curative.
Curative, thank you. For property located at 1225 South Lapeer Road, Section 35 of Oxford Township, partial ID 0435127022, subject to condition listed below. A marijuana provisioning center shall comply with the ordinance of the Township Code of Ordinance, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, the Medical Marijuana Facilities License and successor ordinance and acts. This provide is only valid for a final site approval by the planning commission. The applicant shall provide annual proof of compliance with all applicable state and local license and regulations. The applicant shall provide a security plan and as defined in 5.35J, item 1 of the zoning ordinance for review and approval. And this shall only be vowed upon acceptance of applicant of any condition of this approval and sign by this, in signing of this resolution. Be a further resolved upon any commission by the majority vote at a duly notice regular meeting held this 14th day of July 2022, approves the preliminary site plan for-
Oh, curative.
Curative.
Curative, we've got a typo in here. Curative property located.
Yeah, another typo. One moment.
You wanna know the address?
Yeah.
1225 South Lapeer Road.
1225 South Lapeer Road, Section 22 of Oxford Township.
35, I think.
Section 35 of Oxford Township. Their-
Partial ID 0435-
Hang on, partial ID. Uh, ID help. Subject to the condition listed below. A, comments identified in consultant and agency review shall be addressed in the final site plan. B, this preliminary site plan approved shall expire and be no, be of no effect after 365 days following approval. C, an eight-inch main water line and a fire hydrant added. And E, uh, we want to note the electrical situation on this motion.
What do you mean by noted?
Uh, relocation with DT service plan, uh, on the property.
Well, it has to be modified anyway or the building won't go where it's located on the site plan, so.
But I can resend the item number E.
I, I think you can.
Yes.
Because when the final site plan comes in, they're gonna have to provide the data that tells us what they're doing and where that right-of-way work is gonna be done to put that electrical where it needs to go.
So I'll resend item E that talks about electrical.
Thank you. Well, we have a motion, now we need a second or support.
Second.
Is, is that you, Mr. Bailey?
Uh, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Noel and I have a second from Mr. Bailey. And Susan, I'm gonna want you to call, roll call on this.
Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
It's approved. Next on the agenda, we have our third item with preliminary site plan approval and special land use for the applicant of Frequently Wellness LLC located at 280 North Washington Street, Oxford. Is the petitioner here for that now?
Yes, sir. One second.
Same representative. Busy boy.
Evening. Again, Jim Butler with PEA Group here for 280 North Washington. Subject site is located on the west side, or excuse me, east side of Lapeer Road, south of Helen. It is zoned both C 1 and C 2. Subject parcel is about 1.9 acres or 1.09 acres, which includes a portion of property that will be acquired from the Oxford Township Fire Department. As we all know, it's the former McDonald's site. It's a single-story building, 3,464 square feet in size. There are two existing access points that were installed as a part of the MDOT improvement. Essentially the same locations that McDonald's had years and years ago. We're providing 64 parking spaces on this site. All the stormwater management will be provided again onsite through infiltration. The site plan does meet all the setback requirements pursuant to the underlying zoning. One thing I would like to point out regarding landscaping, your ordinance, when you are adjacent to a residential zoning district, which obviously this parcel right here adjacent is, right through there, there are requirements for additional screening. Certain spacing of trees, number of trees, and we have added those trees in this location. There is a board-on-board fence, for those who have been out there and saw that, that exists. We are not proposing to take that down, gonna keep that in place. That'll provide additional screening. We are having no connection whatsoever to Helen Street. A couple of things I'd like to point out that came up during the public, public comment. One is related to turnarounds and direction of traffic. This is not a part of the boulevarded section. So if someone wanted to leave this site, they could make a left-hand turn and could make a right-hand turn. They would not need to go down, all the way down to Tractor Supply and the Culvers crossover to turn and go back, back to south. The other thing is, the Goddard School, if you look at the aerial map, it's not immediately adjacent. Goddard School, if you click on Google and go from building to building, it's about 1,000 square feet or 1,000 feet from, in, in separation. And that's as the crew would fly. Obviously, you'd have to go up Lapeer Road, go down Gateway Drive to it. So it's a bit longer if you travel by car. McLaren, I, again, Googled it, it's about 650 feet where their existing building currently is today. So the architecture of the building, I'm gonna bring the architect up since it's a little different than the other building for a little bit of explanation of, of where we got. So please nerd yourself.
David Murphy, DRN Architects. So this building is a single-story building, although it, it appears to be a two-story building from the exterior. We have proposed a Federalist-style building in this location, given its location and context with the, the residential neighborhood behind it. We are using high-end materials, brick, stone, uh, brick and stone. Those are the only two materials. There is some soldier coursing going up the, the facade of the building at midway and at the top where the cornice is. We do have a, a wood decorative cornice all the way around the roof lines with a decorative downsout on either side. The main entrance of the building is on the south side of the building. The west side is actually just a decorative entrance to give it that Federalist-style architecture. With that, we can answer any questions.
Yeah, one other point, the, obviously with the style of the architecture, there will be ground-mounted units. And those units are at the northeast corner of the building. They will-
Yeah, yeah.
I got a question again. What'd you quote the square footage earlier? I thought you said 3,460 or something like that.
3,464 square feet.
Yeah, close enough, 460. And, and that's a two-story element?
It's a single story.
It's just tall.
It's just tall.
So those are tall walls?
Those are high walls, yep.
Inside, okay. So you threw me off because he's talking square footage and then I'm looking at that and I said, well, that looks like a lot more.
Yeah, the windows give it the appearance, but obviously-
So when I'm looking at that elevation view right now, which, where's north?
North is to that way.
Around the corner.
Yeah.
This, not where that, not where that deck comes off there.
No, that's facing Lapeer Road.
That's Lapeer Road.
Yeah.
Okay, so north is around the corner.
North is around the corner.
To that building.
Yep.
And that's Helen Street.
That's Helen Street.
What's on that side? Aesthetically, the same building look?
Similar elevation on the other side, except there will not be a canopy where the main entrance is. There's no main entrance on the other side.
All right, there's no entrance at all, right?
Here the elevations, we don't have them color unfortunately, Mr. Berger.
No, but I know what they look like.
Yeah, so, so here is the, the elevation that you're referring to here, there's-
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yep.
That's my north side.
Yep.
So trying to make it look residential.
Can you, can you talk to us more about the main entrance being on the south and the, the, how that's gonna work?
So the, the main entrance is located on the south mainly because of where the customer parking is going to be. So he's gonna pull up the site plan.
Yeah, he's gonna put the site plan back up, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Will eventually.
I know. My, my, my computer's been doing that all night to me. Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, so customer parking is located on the south side of the building, which is here. And they will have direct access in the main entrance, which is here, to-
The west door on the road frontage, is that gonna be used at all?
Not at all. It's decorative.
It's decorative.
Yep.
Is it, is it an emergency exit or just decorative?
Just decorative.
Gotcha.
Yep, that's it.
Now, I don't wanna be critical, but I gotta have handicap parking somewhere, so where would it be on that?
Handicap park.
Cause you're gonna, you're gonna make them walk across the drive?
It's right here.
You're gonna walk across the drive?
Yep.
To enter the building? Typically, I don't, I don't go that way too well in my own opinion, but I'll, I'll keep my, that, just letting you know now. When we did the, uh, some other sites previously, we made them move handicapped closer to where they didn't have to go across the drive and get into the building. Cause when those people are gonna come in off of that, that curve, it doesn't look like a curve there, but I know there's a curve there.
Mr. Berger, I mean, the other choice is here with this rail, the single load.
Well, you can only be within so many feet of the building.
That's closer.
The architect knows that, so, yeah, that's a lot closer.
Be closer, for sure. And we can stripe it out.
Might have to do something a little different there to make that all, I mean, from my opinion, I'm giving it to you now, so.
Okay.
All right.
That's what we're here for.
I agree. Go ahead.
I have a question. So the location of the building on the property itself, why, can you talk about why you chose the location of the building on the totality of the property?
We just, again, looked at the existing layout of the access drives. We figured that MDOT wouldn't allow us to change those. So we decided that we would keep, put them between the two drives like McDonald's was. Instead of having to change due to drive, drive configuration. It's turning blue, but-
Mr. Noel?
The, uh, your privacy fence or your barrier, where does that stop and start? And does it go into the new property where the parking lot is?
Say it again.
The barrier, the, the barrier fence that you have in the back.
The existing fence?
The existing fence.
From what I understand, it's along the residential from here?
I looked at it, but I didn't go back and look for that.
Yeah, it goes essentially where all the landscaping is, is where it goes.
Is that your fence or is that the neighbor's fence?
I believe it's the neighbor's fence.
Okay, so, all right.
Oh, so they put it up in regards to having McDonald's there maybe in the past?
Maybe, but that was yours.
Okay, I'm just thinking out loud.
With, I'm thinking out loud too, Mr. Berger. With the residential zone behind it, if there was a more permanent barrier for the length of that property in the back, would, would that be something the board would be interested in?
You mean the planning commission?
The planning commission, I'm sorry, planning commission.
I would be interested in that, yes.
I guess you'd have to take a straw vote, but anything that someone recommends to make it more beneficial for the residents, then I think nobody would be against it. But, but see, that property gets vacant when you go, when you're on the south portion of the property they're developing, when you get, when you get to that little point right there where it turns, there's a turning point right there.
That's where the fence ends, essentially.
Yeah, that's where it ends. And then it becomes vacant when you go south to the east. That's the piece, Mr. Schultz, that's still responsible to the fire department, right?
Yeah, here, thus.
That whole, yeah, that's all, that's the fire departments, right? Okay. Yeah, I don't know on this one.
Uh, it, it seems like it could be, the way, where the building's laid out on the property could be better. And the style of the building could be better. And the style of the building could be better. It's, it's like, it's, I'm not super happy with the style of the building, like, but this is my taste, this is my opinion. And the placement of the, where the building is at on the property is not utilized to the best of its ability. It's basically saying, hey, there was McDonald's there, let's put it back to where the McDonald's was.
That's not the intent. The intent is to keep the drive points where they are.
I get it, I'm just.
Pursuant to MDOT.
That's just my opinion.
I probably appreciate your opinion.
I appreciate everyone's opinion. Pretty damn rough.
You know, because once again, this is another very high-profile piece of property and it's.
There's, I have concerns on this property. I mean, only because when I knew McDonald's was there and I utilized it and pulled in and out of there, when you talk about going southbound, sometimes it's pretty treacherous, man. I'm telling you right now. And I think the traffic is a, a comment that needs to be looked, I mean, I know, I know what you're talking about with MDOT. They're not going to let you move it. You're there now with them and you're, and I think maybe Mr. Ballard has a point. Maybe there's a better way to make it all work or not work, or I don't know how it's going to work for me right now, cause it might not be the best plan. I mean, I want to make compatibility work for the residents in the neighborhood too. So, I mean, I, I respect the people that live there because they've been there a long time and, and, uh, and what they have and what they are adjacent to. And then Helen's a very tiny street. It's not a real big street. And that, cause I've pulled down. I know, I got my own opinions on this one too. I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm not, I'm not all the way there with this one yet. I gotta be honest, from my point of view.
Mr. Berger, are you recognizing residents?
Yeah, we haven't made a motion or anything yet on this prop, property. I mean, we're just talking about it. But we haven't had the, we don't have.
On behalf of the diehard residents that are still here at what, ten o'clock here this evening to, to show you how adamant we are about this.
Are you at this point?
I just want to make a comment in regards to you talking about.
We're not at this point yet.
We're not at, we're not quite at your point, because we haven't heard from our consultants.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was trying to spit out, but sorry. You gotta give us a couple more minutes. Been a long evening. Let, let's, uh, if anybody's ready at this point. Zach, you're, you're going to be on deck. You might, you might as well get up now and get this thing rolling.
Howdy. Let's see, so the site, uh, as I mentioned before, it's in a couple of different zoning districts. It's got C1, it's got C2. But for the use, it's within the marijuana provisioning overlay. It does meet the required setbacks, uh, for the building. Uh, where am I at now? Page five. The lot coverage is really low, only seven point three percent, thirty percent is allowed. All the setbacks are met for both the building and the proposed parking, but we'll get to parking later. No substantial natural resources issues with the site. Uh, for access and circulation, we've heard that those are the two existing driveways. They're proposing to reuse those. Both of them are wide enough to be both in and out. Let's see, there is a sidewalk to the west. There is going to be a connection on the side of the driveway to the front slash side of the building or the main entrance. For parking, there is a lot of parking on the site. In your zoning ordinance, doesn't have a maximum number of parking, but to give you a rough scale for the size of the building, it's, it's twenty spaces that are required. So there's almost three times the required parking. Uh, we would highly recommend that the planning commission and/or the applicant consider some deferred parking. And that's where you show it on the site plan. You don't install it, but you plan that if it is necessary, you put it there. Until then, it would remain green space or landscaped, but you design your infrastructure in your site as if you're going to need it sometime in the future. There is loading-unloading space on the side of the building that meets the requirements. Again, not likely to be used for this use, but in the future, it may be used for another use. I'll let Mr. Sharp touch on services, but there's also going to be, here's your preview, there's also going to be a directional bore underneath and a new line put along there. For landscaping and screening, there are five trees along Helen that are going to be, existing trees that are going to be preserved. The other trees are consistent with what's required for commercial use. And there is the required twenty-foot green belt around the site. Now, this is where the landscaping that's provided is what's required for a commercial use when you have it next to residential use. Remember though, with special land uses, if you think there's potential greater impact, you could require more screening or you could say, we want a concrete wall or a block wall or something like that. If you think it's important to mitigate any negative impacts of the, the use. Let's see, this, this property is proposing to have a monument sign between the building and the road. No wall signs on it. It does appear that it meets the setbacks, but it's not dimensioned. That's something that should be added to the final site plan or could be done as part of final site plan review. And that's my quick version.
Zach, I do have a question for you. What did you say the percentage of, um, the building to property was?
I believe it's just under eight.
So only eight percent of the property has a building on it?
Correct. No questions?
I have none. Sorry, thank you, Zach. Uh, Mr. Sharp, you know, come up and just present your quickie.
I'm going to drag this one out, Mr. Berger.
Oh, I knew you would. See, that's what I figured.
Stay up, maybe the British open will just be starting by the time we get out of here, okay? You should have, be, uh, have in your packets, uh, our, our preliminary site plan review letter dated July one of 2022, along with a redline set of drawings. Much to the, uh, in kind with the other developments there. You know, we're kind of looking at it from an overall perspective. It was an existing site that was there. The site grading that they're showing, uh, seems to work right now. Uh, the sanitary sewer, they're going to, they're proposing to install a new lead out to, uh, Helen, which is where the, the sewer currently is. Um, that, that system does have capacity for this facility. Uh, the water main, as Zach alluded to briefly, um, the master plan is for a brand-new twelve-inch line on the, on the east side of M24. It's currently only on the west side, so they are showing on their plans to bore underneath M24 with a twelve-inch line and extend hydrants to their southerly and northerly property lines for future extensions on there. Any work within the MDOT right of way within Lapeer Road is going to re- acquire a permit, just to reiterate that, just like all of these tonight. As regards to stormwater, similar to the, the previous, uh, application, they're proposing an underground detention system with a series of leaching basins and so forth. Uh, no geotechnical report was supplied, but, um, just knowing the soils in the area, it's pretty sandy. We're confident that they'll be able to get that to work in some way, shape or form. Again, the sidewalks that were put in, uh, was part of the MDOT project are existing. And you do have those two approaches, um, that are there, maybe not the most ideal, but, uh, that's, that's where they are. And to relocate those would be, um, you know, be a challenge with MDOT, so. I think that's really all I have on this one. Again, so if there's any additional questions that you might have. Nope, all right.
Not for me, anybody else? You have, Mr. Ballard?
Uh, I don't have a question for you, Mr. Sharp, but I do have a question as I'm looking at this, cause I'm thinking about it. I'm, I'm not seeing any sidewalks as well in the property. Am I, am I missing something here? Is there any sidewalks in this design?
On the property, there's the existing five-foot sidewalk that's right on the property line there between, you know, just to, um, you know, inside the right-of-way there. And it looks like there's a connector sidewalk from the south side of the building out to Lapeer Road there.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think, I believe it, there's missing some on that new parcel that, uh, that you guys just acquired from the, uh, fire department? Oh, it, so did they put it in when they? Okay, so I, I was under the, okay.
What about Helen Street? Is there a sidewalk on Helen Street?
It appears that there is, yes.
It looks like there is. So I'm still, yeah, that's fine. I was seeing, still seeing that this was, I'm not seeing in the plan.
Okay, I'll be around. Have you got any more questions?
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Schultz?
I'm just the same thing again with the Knox box, um, on the building, address on the building. Water may come across, make sure the hydrants are on both ends. Um, the only caveat I've got on there is there was a cyclone fence that ran from the north. That, the house that's directly behind them, there's a board fence that comes down. And there's a short section of cyclone fence that runs about to where the Edison pole is. And then Edison, the cyclone fence is taken down all the way down to the tanning property. And when, um, they did the road construction and I just requested that sign or that fence gets put back up across there. So there is a fence across the back of there just for security for us and for them both, so that's it.
So you're talking where that curve is, but behind the dumpster there, all the way down? Fence puts back in?
Yep. Yeah, the fence extends pretty much where that little bit of a jog is right there for probably, I don't know, twenty feet or so. But then, like I said, there's Edison pole and that's right there at that pole is where they took the fence down in Dan's construction, did it work in there? So I'll just, you know, put the fence back up, down and reconnect it back down at the corner down there again then. And that's just a regular cyclone fence.
Did I hear correctly that Jim's going to put a training tower somewhere there for you too?
No.
Our intention is to build on that property in the back, back there. That's our intention.
Did Jim was going to build that for you? Thanks, Pete.
He's not even listening.
Thanks, Pete. He's listening. He's not commenting. He's not commenting. Are there any other questions regarding this site right now?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
The southern piece that was based on what we have here indicates that Oxford Township owns that. Has that been sold and deeded off to, but you're expecting to work on that?
If I may, uh, it's under contract. It has not been, the, the purchase has not been closed yet. So that, that southern piece is still titled in the name of the township. Contingent on.
Yeah, I get it. I mean, cause why invest into something if you don't own it yet and you will?
So we're talking the southern pieces like this?
Yeah, that's it. That's it, because that was originally owned.
By the, yeah, okay, I was just confirming that.
Yeah, when you look at it, if you can kind of just go past that dumpster location a little bit, it sneaks in right there where the last southern portions of parking spaces are, that kind of belonged, that whole section there kind of belonged to the township. And now it's no longer, it's under contract to be purchased by the applicant, the petitioner. That's the way I understand it, yeah. So are there any other questions at this point in time and regarding this site?
Mr. Chair, I'm still struggling with the screening on the east side.
Really? Oh, next to the residential?
Yes.
Are you looking for a more permanent wall?
I'm leaning towards that, but that was a four-foot fence that you talked about, uh, chief, that needs to be replaced or what was, what was that?
Existing cedar fence that's, or whatever you want to call it, is still existing back there. It's at least six feet tall. That runs along that entire property thing. It's, you know.
It's been there a while though, hasn't it?
Quite a while.
And it comes down to your.
It comes down, basically, as you see the new plantings that they're proposing right there?
Yeah.
Basically comes just about to that one corner right there is where that stops. Cause that's the corner of that piece of property of that home.
That's about right. That's the corner that stops it.
Weird jog right there that the property does, does right there, that little distance right there.
Yep, and stops. It turns and stops. I mean, ordinance obviously has a requirement because of the adjacent residential. Um, we are putting a pretty significant row of deciduous or non-deciduous trees, all evergreens in that area. That's what's being proposed, because your ordinance obviously takes that into consideration, because you have a B1 zoning against the residential.
I think we need more of a permanent screening on that, on the east side of that property all the way down for the residential.
I think we need both, the permanent screen and the trees as well, so that would be, yeah. I, I mean, my, my personal feel on this is this is another very important piece. And so if and maybe when, you know, the applicant is no longer here, what happens to the, the building that is? You, you want some of the best opportunity of what you can be and it just doesn't seem like the piece of property is being used to the best of its ability or designed in the best of its ability or the design is, um, is the best that it could be, so, um, yeah, so I think that, I think there needs to be changes to the design and changes to how it's, uh, laid out on the property itself. So, and it's, and the way the traffic comes in and out of that, I know the curb cuts are difficult because it's already there. But it was designed, originally designed for a, uh, you know, a fast food joint, a McDonald's.
Lots of traffic.
There's lots of traffic there and it's, it's, it's a difficult piece to work and if whoever's going on after this is, or however the future of it is, I ha, I have to look at the future of the whole, the whole package. And if it's going to be a difficult piece to get out of, that's, uh, just another thing, another, another thing I need, but let's say, consider and think about.
Yeah, I gotta believe when MDOT did their re-re development of M24, that was considered.
I'm sure, I'm sure, but you know.
Look what they did to the, the previous, we had two, right?
Yeah.
We end up with one, which made sense. It totally made sense.
Sure.
So they did that for a specific reason, obviously. But I mean, I've, I've heard from Mr. Ballard, what are your comments? I'm not sure what the feeling of the rest of the members are.
One of the things, I live here, so, I mean, I'm, I, I see it every day. I mean.
As do I.
Yeah, correct.
I'm an Oxford Township resident.
Correct, exactly. A hundred percent, so I, you know.
I get, and I understand your concerns and I, I do get it. Um, I just, if there's something else you want us to look at, I mean, the architecture was kind of driven by the area. That's what we were kind of looking for, so we don't make something that's modern and stark against stuff. So it doesn't stand out too much. It kind of blends in. That, that's, that was what the, uh, the idea was with that.
We're, we're very happy to, to look at the architecture of the building and adjust it and revise it.
If there's something that doesn't.
Absolutely.
Okay. And if there's something with the site.
Yeah.
I mean, just off the top, off the top of my head, thinking of safety.
Sure. Listening to everything that's been said and what we're talking about, I mean, there's concerns, I think, as to the placement of the building and the location on the site too. So it may have to be, it may have to be reevaluated as to what maybe you could do with that building on that property. You were only asking for thirty-four hundred sixty-four square feet. So I mean, I don't think it's an overuse of the property, but I think there's concern as to how people are going to ingress, egress and then move when they get on the lot and park and stuff. And I am concerned about the residents because, because I, I need to be, you know, and that's, that's important to me. So I, I'm with John, I think it would have to be a more permanent type fence, I guess, and, but you know, concrete's ugly and stuff like that too, when you put it up as a border wall.
There's multiple types.
There's other kinds of things, there's other things you could probably do to make it look more appealing. So I think, I think you got some work cut out for you maybe on this one before we, or I don't know. I don't know how people want to vote on this.
The placement of the building, that's just.
We're talking about, first of all, we're talking about a special land use with a piece of property with a preliminary site plan. Now, they go to, they're, they're going together with us tonight, so.
Of course I do.
I want to make sure we do what we think is in the best interest of everybody for the community. I'm struggling a little, I'm going to tell you right now.
And I, I hear you and I understand. I mean, this has always been a difficult site to do, always been, been a challenge. I mean, there are, there's a few options, I think, in my own mind, to make this better. If you, I mean, you talk about placement, obviously moving the building to the north, probably not the best thing, right? You're putting it close to the residential.
Well, I know what you're talking about, because it moves it to the road.
Right, so if you were to move it, say, south, right? And maybe, I don't know, limit one of the drives. So you don't have to, so you have the farthest point.
South's taking it away from the residential a little better.
But you keep, let's say, for instance, you take that southerly drive, the one that, you take that out. So you have a single point of access at the north.
What's going across there?
If you go south, the power lines run across about where those two trees are.
Yeah, there, that's the other issue.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that part.
There are power lines that run through there.
I honestly just looked at it as a vacant piece of property. That's all I looked at when I went by it.
Essentially the power lines are the property.
Yeah, I didn't pay attention to that part.
So there are those. There, so we do have some limitation, but can we move it slightly? Sure. Can we add some additional screening, uh, vegetative reinforcement along the common property line with the residential? Sure.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a couple avenues we can drive down tonight and I don't want to, if we drive down a negative one, then that's not what you want to hear. And if, if we, if we, if we don't get some modifications or opinions from people that look like we're going to be in the right direction to make this thing work, then we're we're backing ourselves up against the wall, yes, Mr. Noel.
I have a general question. Can we approve the special land use with, and not approve of the preliminary site plan tonight?
I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay.
Only because they're connected.
That's why I'm asking the question.
They're connected as the use of Mr.'s, Mr. Michelle's. Would you like to talk?
My next question's going to involve him anyway, so.
Yeah, so as a reminder, it is possible to make changes between preliminary and final. They could remove a row of parking, they can change the landscaping, they can show a new fence. Uh, part of preliminary is, see, is it a general fit? Is it likely to meet the ordinances? And also for the body to provide guidance of, here are some things that we're going to want to see different in the final. So if you do have some of those, you can provide that direction still with approving preliminary. So for the conditions as part of a, a special land use, I want you to kind of think these are conditions tied with reducing the impact of this use on the adjacent properties. So have that in mind if you're concerned about the adjacent residential properties, it would be appropriate to say. it would be appropriate to say, the landscaping you've got plus a masonry or concrete fence. If you're concerned about traffic going up to Helen, you could say, no egress to Helen ever for this use. I would caution, because this is not a planned unit development where there's more discretionary, there's, how to phrase this, so, with the traditional zoning that Oxford Township has, Euclidian zoning, for the building placement, you're looking at, does it meet the setbacks? Does it meet the height? If it were a planned unit development, then you could get more into the details of the actual architecture. For the site layout, you're looking at, do things meet the required setbacks, and is there gonna be challenge with moving vehicles around the site with circulation, with utilities, those types of things. But certainly if there are things you wanna see different in a final site plan, now would be the time to let them know, here are things we'd like to see differently.
Mr. Chair, let's talk these issues through, you had, you had a concern about handicap parking.
Well, it's always because I know how it works, and how people have to worry that don't walk real quick or get around well, and, and I don't like, I don't like them walking across main drives to, to get in and out of a place. But, you know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the area, I'm looking at the whole thing, like, is this really compatible for the special land use to be at this point, too? I mean, I'm looking at what's across the street, I'm looking at what's to the north, I'm looking at what's to the east. I don't know if this fits the shoe well, in my opinion.
So if the shoe doesn't fit, where do we go tonight?
Well, you don't have to approve it, but, you know, you can make a motion and see how it floats.
That's where I was talking with Zach, we have a, we have their license for a provisioning center granted last night, where does that, where does this all play out? How does this work, Zach?
Well, that's a legal question I don't have an answer to.
Zach, do you jump in on this, or help me out here?
Well, I will, I'm gonna answer you by quoting Zone Code, which is always a great way to answer somebody. So for special land uses, the zone, the zoning ordinance provides you guidance of things to look at. And so the, their findings of fact, and these are the things that you're gonna look to determine whether or not it's a fit. So the way that this use has been delegated up in the township is, you're looking at one thing, the township board is looking at slightly different things. So the criteria, these are Section 4.5 findings of fact in your zoning ordinances if you're following home. The first one, the proposed special land use must be compatible with adjacent uses of land in terms of location, size, and character, and will have no negative impact on adjacent property or the surrounding neighborhood. And that's where you can impose conditions for that to be true. So you may, you may say it won't be true as it is, but if, if we do this condition there. The next one, the proposed...
Let's look a little bit deeper in that.
Yep.
If this board would say that we don't believe it meets 4.5A through 4.5G, do, where do we stand with that?
The best course of action would be to say, we don't believe it meets this one because, so, especially if...
Because we don't believe it fits the usage on that property?
We don't feel it fits the usage because of this, this, and this.
Size and character, right?
Yep, so if, if you're going to, and the best practice is to do it, whether you're approving or denying, is say, this one is true because of this, but that makes the process really long.
We haven't done that tonight.
The next one, the proposed special land use must be consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and other applicable codes. The third, the proposed special land use must not pose an unreasonable impact upon the natural environment. Next is, the proposed special land use must be compatible with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use.
Can you explain that one a little bit, a little bit, just a tiny bit for me, so, a little bit better layman's terms?
Yep, so I'm gonna use a, a different example, but I'm gonna stay in the marijuana world. So a, a grow facility has much higher demands for water, and especially electricity than a typical building of that size.
Okay.
So if you're in an area and you know there's not appropriate electrical service for it...
Perfect.
That's, that's where you're looking at.
Thank you for helping with that.
Can, can the infrastructure support the special land use? Let's see, the next one, so my apologies, I've got new glasses for the first time in five and a half years, and they've decided that they've done all they're gonna do today. The next is, the proposed special land use must be consistent with vehicular turning patterns, traffic flow, intersections, view obstructions, ingresses and egresses, off-street parking, and other existing conditions of the district.
Zach, question about traffic flow, can we, can we request a traffic pattern survey?
Your zoning ordinance has a minimum standard for when they have to come in the door with that, and this was substantially lower than what that threshold is. I don't remember what it is offhand, but I can get it from the zoning ordinance. What's the threshold? It's like the equivalent of 50 houses during a peak hour. It's, it's pretty high. The next one is, the proposed special land use must be designed, located, planned, and operated so that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. And the final one is, the proposed special land use must be consistent with the goals, objectives, and future land use plan described in the Charter Township of Oxford Master Plan. So if you are, if you feel that you're struggling with aspects of any special land use, go through those and see how it matches up or not. So it's, it's...
There's two suggestions I wanna, wanna, wanna make tonight, Mr. Chair, we do have some people from the community that wanna speak, first of all, and I don't wanna forget that. Second of all, Zach, don't run away yet.
Oh, oh.
If we were to go through the motion as we have done tonight and, and not approve the motion, then where does this whole project stand? Where, where do we stand as the township, and where do we stand as the applicant?
So, I'll, I'll be a good planner and give you a couple of answers. The short answer is that if a special land use is not approved, then you can't do a medical provisioning center there. And, and so that stop it.
Can they come back and, and, after they...
Yep, so...
Get our minds together, and we talk things over, can they come back and say, this is what we propose, proposal B?
Yep, so the, the next answer would be, there's a, a general concept for most zoning applications, that if you've been denied, you can't come back for a year unless if the reason, you've addressed the reasons why you were denied. And so that's why it's really good to say, here are the concerns we have, so that applicants can modify it to address that.
I wanna work with this, I, I don't think the board's there, okay? I would like to, to entertain a concept of not approving this for size and character to the property, and not tying their hands, the applicant's hands, but allowing them to come meet with the board, again, with different ideas, because it's, it's getting late tonight, and I'm not using that as an excuse, but we've gone through a lot of packages tonight, but I, I think we might wanna revisit this again with some fresh eyes, on a fresh day, with some fresh thoughts.
One another...
Why don't you make a motion to table it instead of deny it?
You can postpone it to another meeting.
I was gonna ask that.
Well, thank you, 'cause I'm struggling with it.
That's my third answer, is that you can postpone it, they can revise it and come back.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Noel.
Before you motion to postpone, a little detail is that if you postpone it to a specific date...
That's what you gotta do.
Then it's, it doesn't have to be re-noticed, if you just postpone it indefinitely, we have to re-notice it in the paper and send it to the other one.
But does the app, could the applicant help us out? What would you like to see? And we'd still need to hear from the public.
I think you better postpone it for a specific date.
Hundred percent, I agree.
Thirty days.
Fourteenth, so you, you could say our next available meeting date in August would probably put it to about, technically, the 11th, which is on the second Thursday, which is a normal meeting time slot for us. So you should put it to August 11th, 22.
Okay. Do you wanna open up for any public comment now, or do you want...
Well, we, we, I think if we're gonna, I think if we're gonna postpone it right now, I don't know if we need to go into any public comment deeper, until we see what comes back at us, I mean, unless, you wanna get up and speak?
Sir, you know me.
Yep. You've been here a long time, so speak.
Three minutes.
Yes, it's been a long time.
Try to keep it as brief as you can.
To me, and to the diehard residents that are still here at, after 10 o'clock this evening, it, it's an, it's an easy answer. When it comes down to the special land use, it states you have to be harmonious with the surrounding community, and that it promotes the uniqueness of Oxford Township. This definitely doesn't. Bottom line, should not be special land use, not for medical marijuana purposes, period. Overdone with.
Thank you.
And we can end it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, everyone has passed their bedtime, we're all gonna get pretty crabby soon. So I, I noticed that spacing is addressed in the, the package, the minimum distance of 1,200, 20, 1,250 feet between the provisioning centers itself, for the township's zoning jurisdiction, but the Michigan, it doesn't address anything that has to do with residuals, the spacing between residuals. The Michigan Marijuana Dispensary Locations says that state law, it's within 1,000 feet of any school or exclusive residential neighborhood. So this is like 300 feet or less to the, you know, the six homes along Helen, and then the other, I believe it's, what is it, Lincoln or... So it's, it's proximity-wise, it does not fit for the special use being a cannabis distribution center, basically.
Provisioning center.
Which is the same.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you've got another...
Yes, ma'am.
If you postpone this and set this for 30 days out, I'm just wondering, they're gonna do something to the building, maybe change back, forward, whatever they're gonna do, but how is this gonna, this is not gonna affect the safety of the people coming in and out of that place, 'cause the traffic is horrendous on that curve. So that's not gonna do anything to help that situation whatsoever. Moving the building forward, backward, or adding more plants, or whatever, that's not gonna make any difference there. And you know it's bad, you can hardly get out of there if you're going south. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, but I have a question prior. I see people walking around, August 11th, what, what kind of a date is that for, should I put that in here?
Well, it's actually the, a, a normal planning commission day, because it's the second Thursday of the month.
Okay.
So when I went to the calendar and looked it up, either we would go further or sooner, but sooner doesn't work well. So if you didn't wanna go to the 11th, you would have to go to the next two-week period after that. The 11th is closer to the 30 days that they looked forward to bringing something back to us with. So that's what I went to, the 11th on.
If I can help alleviate any confusion, the 11th would be fine with us, wouldn't it?
No, it's just... Because you would have to automatically just turn it right around, 'cause they have to have two weeks.
I'll, forgot that. Sorry.
Or it doesn't fit.
Good point.
Thank you, Cheryl, thank you, Cheryl.
So what do you suggest, Ms. Cheryl?
Well, then it goes to the next date.
Well, I'm working on it. All right.
Which is August 25th.
Okay, that's better.
That's too quick, is what you're saying.
All right. I'd like to make a motion. A resolution to postpone a special land use and preliminary site plan for a marijuana provisioning center submitted by Greg Utoma on behalf of the Frequency Wellness LLC, the property's located at 280 North Washington, Section 22 of Oxford Township, partial ID 0422403001, and partial ID 0422403002, and part, and part of partial 0422404021, to the next Planning Commission meeting in August, the date would be August 25th, 2020.
I have a motion, do I have support? To postpone this preliminary site plan?
I'll second.
And supported by Mr. Ballard. I'd still like a roll call vote, though. Just, thank you, Susan.
Bailey?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
I'll pass.
Thank you. Okay, we're done with new business tonight, we're into now Communications and Committee Reports. I don't know, Economic Development Committee, I don't even know what that is right now at this point in time. Is there anybody on, on that committee that's sitting up here tonight? I don't believe there is.
Mr. Spitz is the only one.
So that's the only one that we, we don't, and now, the Ordnance Review Committee did meet recently, last Thursday. We're still working on some of the priority issues that we've had from the past, we have some new things that have been brought to us, that are considered to be of higher priority, so we're trying to put some things together as quickly as we can and as fast as we can meet. And that's it from the Ordnance Review Committee, do we have any planners, issues to report?
Well, just, thanks, everyone, for your patience and attention tonight, it's, it's a lot more business than you usually have had, and it's, it's tough to weigh the different viewpoints, you did a pretty good job. I will say, one thing that the township has been trying to do is, is get folks in for pre-application meetings, much earlier and more aggressively than previously was done. And I think because of that, even though there may be some concerns with the special land use, there were a lot of details on these preliminary site plans that would have been missed in the past, which makes it a lot easier for consultants and for you guys to look at it. So I like that process, and I'm glad that we're doing it more.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sharp, do you have any comments this evening?[1789.04]